General, you're live.
That's good.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Dyton Board of Selectmen, Wednesday, July 27, 2022, at 6:02 PM. This meeting is a hybrid meeting. The Zoom login information, meeting ID is 890-3819-1677, passcode 284236. A phone login will be 1-929-205-6099. This agenda is subject to the revisions and additions prior to the meeting. Public input may be provided using the following methods. Prior to this meeting, contact the Board of Selectmen office at boardofselectmen@dyton-ma.gov to provide input, also via Zoom this evening, or call in by phone at the phone number that was mentioned a moment ago. There will be continued play on Dyton Channel 9 and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdyton. This is a revised agenda originally posted on Monday, July 25 at 3:55 PM. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent permitted by law. With that being said, I would like to call the order.
Ken? President.
Mr. Carron.
Present.
Chairman Hull is present. I'm going to ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since our last meeting, we have had one Dyton resident pass. Frederick W. Woodcock, 72, of North Dyton, passed away in his home, surrounded by his loving family, on Sunday, July 17, 2022. Along with his wife Mildred, he is survived by two children, Brian Woodcock of North Dyton and Stephen Woodcock of North Dyton. He's also has a brother Bruce, who is also a Dyton resident. Fred graduated from D.R. High School in 1968 and served in the United States Navy during the Vietnam War. He worked in the advertising department as an art director for Ernie Bark Auto Sales. This time, I ask that we extend our condolences and thoughts to the Woodcock family. Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is Albert Galvin of National Grid. Is Mr. Galvin present?
So I believe National Grid and Mr. Galvin are on Zoom. They're participating remotely. I believe anyone from National Grid, or Mr. Galvin?
Yes, I'm here.
Good evening.
So, so yeah, yes, we do actually have two public hearings before the Board this evening. So on both hearings, both hearings relate to propose new poles on Chestnut Street and North Street. And so we will need to enter into two separate hearings and then consider, and then consider both sets of petitions separately, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. With that being said, Mr. Galvin, do you have any information that you would like to provide to us in regards to the poles on North Street?
Okay, I'll provide a general layout, and then I'm also joined on the line by one of the engineers from the contracted design team that actually did the job out there, Leidos. So I'll give you the general breakdown of what's happening, and then they get into the specifics of the scope of the project and why the project is being done, that type of thing. Basically, what it is, they're replacing existing single-phase primary lines out there along Reynolds Ave to set up new feeders, and in doing so, has set new poles, new anchors, and that's to support an ever-year-grade spacer cable, they call it. And they also had to make a couple of adjustments here and there because of angling, so the guide wires and the support wires weren't in a bad spot. So that's why a couple of those positions were adjusted as well. We're at, basically, that's basically the gist of it. They're doing a lot of upgrades out there for feeder work. If my fellow partner from Leidos can pop in and explain maybe the project.
Sure. Hi, this is Nilou with Leidos Engineering. I am one of the designers who did the work. I don't know if you all are aware, but there is a new substation that's being built in Roohobat, and that is also part of this work, support work for the substation. National Grid did a study of overall Atabour area, and there has been a lot of issues with power outages and thermal loading and reliability, et cetera. So as they're part of this overall plan to make reliable feeder work out there in the entire Atabour area, we're doing various work in Dyton, Roohobat. And as, excuse me, Albert mentioned, we are bringing double circuit of spacer cable along Chestnut Street and North Street to support the loading out in Roohobat and Dyton and other surrounding towns. Basically, that's the end. If there are particular questions for pole locations or anchor location, I can get in more details with that as well.
Do any of the members have any questions?
I have no question. I'm not sure if the public has any questions, but I have no questions, so listen to see if the public has any questions about it.
Any public comment?
Are they replacing poles, or these are just going to be new poles?
So we are replacing poles and adding some additional poles.
Mr. Pacheco, do you have any questions?
I have no other concerns.
The one question that I do have is how far off the road will these poles be on North Street?
Let me just check. So the proposed poles on North Street are about 16 feet from center line.
From the center?
Where the existing poles are. So there is only one proposed pole on North Street. All the other poles are just, we're replacing the existing poles.
So you're saying they're 15 feet from the center line? So from the side of the road, we're talking maybe five feet or less? Is that correct?
Yes, but I would have to check to be exactly sure. So the new poles that we're replacing or installing, those poles are, I'm sorry, are 20 feet from the center line. I misread. Existing poles are about 16 feet from the center line. But the new poles that we proposed by the church, they are 20 feet from the center line.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen, I would like if Mr. Ferry could come to the podium, please. Thank you.
Evening.
I have a couple of questions that I believe you may have the answer for. Regarding town policy, is there a policy about how close telephone poles can be to the road? Because we've, I know of one pole in particular that's always been an issue, always getting nicked on the corner of Main and 138. And I was wondering if there's a policy about how close poles can be to the road?
No, there's not a policy with the exact measurement, how close to the road. What dictates that a lot is underground utilities or resource areas, and also the wire alignment up above. That plays a large role. I went over this project with National Grid several months ago. Most of the poles are being replaced in kind where they are already. Like she mentioned, one pole's getting replaced. An additional pole has been added to North Street. And the other thing that, I forgot the first gentleman's name, did not mention is most of the trees, I was invited out there as a tree warden also. So some of the trees are going to be addressed. Most of them is normal maintenance cuts or deteriorated trees that have compromised the wires now already. There's two trees in question after the new alignment, where the new poles are going. I'll be reviewing that in the future.
Thank you. Would it be your recommendation that we approve this project as presented?
As presented, yes.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any further questions?
I don't have any.
With that, I will entertain a motion.
I do have a question.
I'm sorry?
Do I go up there?
Yes, please. And if you could state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Hi, Sandra Noel. I live at 2398 Chestnut Street in North Dyton. So I live near the corner of North Street and Chestnut Street, and we have one of the poles in our yard that has like an arrow on it. There's also a gigantic tree. You might be aware of that. It's huge. I'm just wondering if that pole is being replaced, if you know? And if so, is it going to be in that same spot or a different spot? Because it's kind of an awkward...
That would be a question.
For them, okay.
It's right at the intersection. Usually, that white mark is indicating replacement in place.
Okay. And I spoke with some folks a year or more ago when they were coming around the neighborhood to ask. Because we had asked many years back if we could take that tree down, and the town told us no. I mean, it's a really, I know it's an old tree, but when I tell you it's like hanging over the wires really bad, no matter how you trim it, it's a matter of time before that tree or big branches fall down. But it does have the electricity pole right there as well, so. And maybe I can look at the plan in your office if you don't have the question. So I figured I would ask while I was here.
Thank you. Mr. Galvin, question. Is it possible to move that pole?
Please. Let's see, I'm sorry.
On the corner of Chestnut and North Street?
This is, is it pole 27, or is this property right across from the church?
It looks like pole 29.
29, okay. 2398 Chestnut Street is your address?
Yes.
Okay, pole 29. Let me just double check here. I know exactly which tree you're talking about as well. I think I might have met you out there a year and a half ago, probably.
Is it possible to move the location of that pole so that it's not an encumbrance on their property?
Yeah, I don't know. So it's staying, it's just staying there?
It's a replacer.
So, yeah, like, so, yeah, it sounds like they're replacing it, but is the tree the issue that you want to address?
I mean, the pole and the tree are so close together. I'm just saying, like, if you see it, it would make sense. It's like really kind of an awkward situation. Branches are constantly coming onto that pole. And that was, it was before we bought the property, but there's vines growing up on that tree, which can make it even worse and make it heavier, and it's just a tangy mess. So I don't know whether we, if you keep the pole there, that's fine. Maybe deal with the tree. Or, I don't know. I know when they came out to look at it, it's probably maybe, whenever they were talking about that substation plan, the folks looked at it and they even said, yeah, this is not a great, it's not a great scenario. So I figured I, while this was happening, I'd...
Mr. Ferry?
That is one of the trees that we are watching.
Okay.
I don't want to just take it down.
Right.
So we're not going to take it down because we have to.
Right.
That's what we have to do.
All right, thank you.
So the town has the responsibility of their tree, not the homeowner?
It's on town property.
With this project, it would be National Grid working with me.
Okay. So since the pole is coming out to be replaced, is it possible to move the pole?
I believe not, because I just checked. It also has a secondary service that's actually feeding the house.
Sounds like she's okay with the pole being replaced where it is. It's the tree you're more concerned about.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we've lived with the pole, that's fine. It's just that the two together are kind of an awkward situation.
Could that tree be trimmed in such a way that it would lessen the problem?
Yes, it's going to be determined between myself and National Grid whether it's going to be trimmed or removed.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, thank you. At least you're aware of it, which I appreciate, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Are there any further questions?
I have none.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the installation of four new J.O. poles on North Street and for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings, as each of said petitioner's may desire for distributing purposes.
I so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Carron?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. The next item is the installation of nine new poles on Chestnut Street and the relocating of one J.O. pole on Chestnut Street. Mr. Galvin, do you have any information you'd like to pass on to us in regards to this project?
No, again, it's related to the previous one. Nilou, if you could explain the locations, the issues?
Yeah, it's the same line continuing down, and we're adding new poles to the angles and to increase the reliability of the line. It's part of the same project, just going along Chestnut Street.
Are there any questions from the members of the Board?
I have no questions.
Are there any questions from the public on this request? That being said, I will entertain a motion for the approval on Chestnut Street of the installation of nine new J.O. poles and relocating one J.O. pole on Chestnut Street, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as may be necessary, and said poles would be erected substantially in accordance with the plan here with it in provided. Do I...
I so move.
Second? Motion made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Carron?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you very much. Next on the, you're very welcome. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Eric Arubak, Tap Beer Truck. Is there anyone here from the company or from representing North Country Auction?
I believe Mr. Arubak is on Zoom with us. Good evening, Mr. Arubak.
Good afternoon. Good, thank you.
Excellent. I very appreciate it. And, um, that is a new junket. So yes, I'm here with Tap Beer Truck for a local beer company. We've been hired by North County Auctions for the Classic Car Show, the weekend of August 5th, 6th, and 7th, at 1892 County Street. They've hired us to be pouring wine and beer from 4 to 8 on the 5th, 11 to 3 on the 6th, and 11 to 3 on the 7th. Arubak is the main payer, so they've already been paid, so we won't actually be physically selling alcohol on site. We're exploring, maybe the bidders, auctioneers, sellers, and the people working the parts. They'll be expecting to, to, like, to, I think, people getting ready to go.
As I look at the packet, I don't see an event request submitted by North Country Auction. Is it a general agreement that they will provide a police detail, or must they submit a request, Mr. Mullen, each time they have an event?
The agreement, the agreement and the understanding for the police details has always, has always happened traditionally through the PD and not through the Board itself. So I believe for this event, that North Country, that North Country Auctions has already, has already reserved the police details for that event as well.
Okay.
So that has all happened, happened actually separate, like from the, from the liquor license request that Eric is applying for this evening.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Who will be serving the, the names of the people who will be serving the liquor?
Yes, we have, we submitted a tip certification cards for Christopher Regal and Alton.
Hamilton?
Yes, thank you.
Christopher Regal's certification expires on July 30, 2022, and this event is in August, so will he be getting recertified?
Yes, that is correct.
So we would need, we would want that before we give permission, I would think.
If you have anything on this one.
I'm in favor of this, but with the condition that Mr. Regal get recertified, allowing him to serve liquor. Right now, its certificate expired, will expire on July 30.
Mr. Mullen, I also have a question. In regards to the certificates, who is the enforcement officer on that? Is it Mr. Pilling, or is it the Police Department?
The Police, the Police Department, like, we, like, in terms of, in terms of the TIPS certification, it's act, like, it's actually the Board as the licensing authority, but the PD on the day of, like...
That's my, yeah. It would be the Police Department, okay? Mr. Carron, do you have any questions? I will entertain a motion for the approval of the one-day liquor license request for the North Country Auction event, August 5th, 6th, and 7th.
I so move with the condition that the, both people serving liquor are certified.
Do I have a second on the? Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Carron?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you very much, Eric. Hope you have a good night.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Matthew Coster, Town Council, for the approval of acquisition and closing and relating, related documents, 207 Main Street, Dyton, Mass. And also the approval of occupancy agreement, 207 Main Street, Dyton, Mass., with Father's House Family Church. Good evening, Mr. Coster.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. So we have the closing scheduled on this tomorrow, and there's a few documents that the selectmen need to approve, and so that's the reason why I'm here. The first item is that customarily, when the town obtains real estate, there's a page attached to the deed where the selectmen accept the conveyance on behalf of the town. And I didn't bring extra copies of this particular document, but we have the deed from Father's House Family Church, Inc., 207 Main Street. That'll be signed by the sellers tomorrow. And then part of the deed is, there's a page that says, "Acceptance by the Town of Dyton." I'll just read it to you. It's short. "We, the undersigned, being the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Dyton, hereby accept the conveyance of the parcel of land located at 207 North Main Street, Dyton, Massachusetts, by the foregoing deed pursuant to the authority granted to us by the vote of the annual town meeting held on June 6, 2022, at which meeting Article 30 was duly adopted, authorizing the purchase of said parcel of land by the town." And so this is a customary form, and I would ask, I don't know if a vote is needed, but I would ask that the selectmen sign this in order to accept the deed when it's given to us tomorrow at the closing.
Mr. Mullen, would it be appropriate that we...
Yes, I would recommend a motion.
...enter into the agreement prior to signing?
Yes.
Okay.
If you accept the motion, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the document that was just read and that we sign that document.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Carron?
Aye.
Aye.
Should I hand that up to you?
Chairman Hull is an aye.
We'll sign it now.
And I will hold that until all is in order, and we have the signed deed, of course. We're going to hang on to that. We're going to have Karen notify us. And then the next...
Excuse me, we're going to hang on to this. We'll bring it tomorrow.
That's fine.
Yes, we'll have it notarized.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
And so the next item I have, which I actually did bring extra copies of this, is pursuant to the purchase and sale agreement. I'll hand this up to the three of you.
Thank you very much.
The seller has the right to use and occupy the premises for, for a period of time after the closing.
So the purchase and sale agreement authorized the church to use and occupy the premises after the closing for an initial period of three months, and then they had the right to request one additional period of three months, and at the end of that period, they would have to vacate, no matter what. And so this use and occupancy agreement memorializes the agreement between the parties, and it governs the use and occupancy of the premises by Father's House Family Church, Inc., the seller during that timeframe. And it contains requirements that are usual for this type of agreement, that they have to ensure, provide a certificate of insurance for their use and occupancy of the premises. The town has the right to make renovations to the property during that timeframe, and that just needs to be coordinated with them. Work on the exterior of the building and also work on the interior. And if you have any particular questions about the document, I'd be happy to, to answer them. So...
Mr. Pacheco?
So the only question I have is, and I think I read that in this, uh, paperwork that you gave us before, they're gonna cover the insurance while they're staying there, and once they leave, obviously, the town will-
Once they leave, they're-
It's our responsibility.
It's no longer their responsibility.
But in the meantime, while they're there, they're gonna be paying the insurance.
And they have to provide a certificate of liability insurance, and it can't be canceled unless the town has given notice.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen? Mr. Costa, I, I do have a, a question in regards, actually, um, appearances are, are very, very important. And Our Father's Family Church has been incredibly supportive of the Town of Dayton in reaching this agreement. And I understand that they are in the process of finding a place to locate in a market that is somewhat difficult. I'm hoping that they understand that in any way that we can help them should the time come, where this agreement reaches a, an endpoint, that they understand that we would be willing to sit down and talk to them about a further extension. By vote of, the vote of selectmen, of course. But that, um, although this agreement does give them occupancy, uh, for a period of time, that should they not find a facility, we're willing to come back to the table to discuss this further.
Can I just, uh, comment on that? In our conversations with the church, they indicated to us that they will be out in six months, whether or not they have a place, uh, for church. Now, they're actively looking for a place. They wanna build in Dayton. Obviously, in six months, they're not gonna have a place. But they've, uh, said in the past, they've had their meetings, the church, uh, meetings, virtually, occasionally. The other, uh, thing, and we, we don't need to take a vote on it, I think I've had a conversation with my colleagues on the board. In the event that they don't have a place in six months, I personally am not opposed to them using this facility, this building, on Sundays for the church, as long as the items of the church are removed so that we don't have necessarily have a crucifix behind us and that kind of stuff, so. And I think that the board in the past, when I've had these conversations, had been in agreement with that.
Absolutely.
We would have to vote on it, obviously, open meeting, but-
Right. But please, I don't know if that's been extended to them already, but definitely that, that's how, Mr. Pacheco, I feel. Uh, Mr. Karen?
I would be hesitant to say that they could continue to use it on Sundays even after the six months. I, I don't know what would be involved, and I think we should address it when the time comes, uh, than just giving them a blanket.
I'm talking about this building here.
Right. Yes, this, this, no, no, this building.
This building, and, uh, I spoke to Pastor Maria, and I indicated to her that that would be something that the board would consider.
Yes.
Should have to bring it before the board. Obviously, we'd have to vote on it in open session. But I, uh, I felt, and I think we've had this conversation, that, uh, it would be okay for them to come here if they need, really needed a spot. Given this, it's a unique situation. We're buying the church. They're gonna be out within, up to si, you know, could be there up to six months, and I think it's only fair that we give them an opportunity. Obviously, we want public input on this, but we give them the opportunity to come here for a while until they find a place. And the good thing is they're looking for a place in Dayton, so.
I, I would like to add, so the public understands, that Mr. Pacheco spearheaded the negotiations along with Mr. Mullen, I believe Mr. O'Connor, uh, from the library, and Mr. Costa. Josh Lindt. And, and Mrs. Tavarez as well. And the relationship has been, and the negotiations have been very amicable. But many of the things that Mr. Pacheco has expressed, he said them as a representative of the Board of Selectmen because he was appointed by myself and Dr. Zagoffnis to be our spokesperson going forward with these negotiations. So with that being said, unless we have any further questions, I will entertain a motion for approval of the occupancy agreement of 207 Main Street, Dayton, with Father's House Family Church as presented.
I so move.
Do I have a, motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Mr. Costa, thank you very much.
So then as to that, I would ask that the board actually sign it at the meeting. There's three signatures on it, and-
So, uh, we wanna put tomorrow's date on it? Or you have, do you have one with the date?
Well, it's, what we'll do is when it's fully signed, we'll put tomorrow's date on it.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
I'll just sign this and pass this along.
Actually, we could sign two copies, so I'll provide them with an original also.
Great.
So I'll also hand this one to you.
Yes, thank you.
Now, this is very exciting. This is 25 years, at least.
A long time.
So we, we'll certainly express to them that if they have anything that they need, you know, once use and occupancy agreement, you know, sets getting towards its end, then, um, certainly communicate that, and the Board of Selectmen will entertain whatever, um, you know, they might need or request.
We don't normally use this facility on Sundays, so I, I think it's appropriate.
Yes.
This is definitely Main Street, right? Not North Main Street, like you said?
No, it's Main Street. 207 Main Street.
You said it first. You said North Main.
Oh, I didn't mean to. I apologize. I may have misspoke.
We can give that-
Okay. I can take that back.
That doesn't have to be notarized.
And I'll provide a copy to, um, Mrs. Ray for, for, uh, records.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So then, I think just one additional matter is that, at, my understanding is a member of the selectmen will attend the closing.
I believe.
Yeah, I think we need a vote to, uh, give me permission to sign, uh, the agreement tomorrow.
So we'll have-
Okay. No, no, that's okay. I thought we had done that originally, but-
We, I think we voted that I would negotiate, be part of the negotiation, uh, team, but we didn't actually vote that I would be the one, uh, signing tomorrow. I'm available tomorrow. I'm glad, very glad, very happy to sign this tomorrow, as the board knows, so.
Just to bright, providing you some background, at the closing, we'll have customary closing documents. And so if a board member is there, it would be best if there was a vote authorizing him to be there to sign-
Absolutely.
customary closing documents, settlement statement and any other, um, documents needed for the closing.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Selectman Kenneth Pacheco attend the closing to sign the documents, um, the purchase, not the purchase, sale, but-
A settlement statement?
Settlement statement, uh, on behalf of the Town of Dayton.
And if you could include that and any other necessary, uh, documents for the closing.
And any other necessary documents for the closing.
I so move.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karen, aye. Chairman Hall is an aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you tomorrow, and I'll see to it that this paperwork is brought to-
Okay, good.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a gay and gay at the block. So we were gonna originally do it at the registry.
Okay.
So it's switched this afternoon, Ken. I hadn't had a chance to update you yet.
So is this gay and gay down at the Cape, or is this gay and gay in Titans?
It's the only one in, in time.
It's the same office?
It's definitely pre-Washington Street.
Okay, I know where it is. I've been there.
Information.
Too many times.
Yes, I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Benny Costa.
Thank you for everything.
Uh, next on the agenda, uh, Town Clerk, Mark Pacheco, uh, in regards to the approval of the assignment of police officers at polling places and the approval of warrant for the 2022 state primary.
Absolutely. Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me. Yes, I have a few things I'm looking for tonight. A few things that we need action on. The first thing is, and the easiest thing is, the signing of the warrant for the state primary on September 6th, 2022, from 7:00 to 8:00, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Dayton Elementary School for all three precincts. So the other thing that I'm looking for is, we have, the Votes Act was signed on July 22nd. With the Votes Act, we have early voting. Um, I'm looking for the early voting hours as presented to you tonight to be approved. We are looking to reduce the first week of early voting for the general election to half of our normal business hours. Uh, reducing that will save costs to the taxpayer, um, but it's the minimum amount required by law. That requires a vote by the Board of Selectmen. If we left it for just all business hours that first week, I don't need a vote. Um, the Town Clerk can just, can just do that. But if you voted as presented, I need a vote by the Board of Selectmen. And, um, the last item that we have to talk about tonight is the assignment of police officers at the polling location with the Votes Act. One of the changes was that generally is that the Chief of Police had the authority to assign police officers to a polling location. With the change of the Votes Act, it's now the Board of Selectmen that make that decision. So, um, so for the, um, state primary on September 6th and the November, um, general election on November 8th, I've talked to the, um, police, uh, police station. I don't wanna quote anyone, but, um, two officers seem sufficient for that day. And it's not required by law to have a police officer there for early voting, but I do request one. And through my conversations with the Police Department, I don't wanna quote anyone, so I'm just gonna say broadly speaking, I was left in the impression they supported it, but I will let the police speak for themselves.
Okay. Um, the first, and if my colleagues, I'd like to take, agree. I'd like to take these items separately and have separate votes on each of them. Mr. Pacheco, you were requesting that the Board of, uh, Selectmen approve the September 6th and general election November 8th, uh, at the Dayton Elementary School. Is that correct?
Just the signing of the state primary warrant.
For that?
Yeah, so that, it's already designated, the elementary schools are polling locations, so just the signing of the warrant.
Um, do, are there any questions in regards to that?
This is the primary date we're talking about? Just the primary date, not really voting?
We'll be back for the state election without warrant when we're closer, so.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the warrant for the primary of September 6th at the Dayton Elementary School.
I so move.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. The second item is a request to reduce the voting, early registration sessions from full day to, um, Monday, August 29th, 7:30 to 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, August 30th, 7:30 to 4:30 p.m. Wednesday, August 31st, 7:30 to 5:30 p.m. Thursday, September 1st, 7:30 to 4:30. On Friday, September 2nd, by appointment only. And then, early voting. Now, will we be, will you be coming back for the general election too, or are we doing all this at one time?
I'm hoping that we can just take care of this tonight, and then we can hopefully just sign the warrant for the, um, for the general. You missed August 27th, 9 to 5. Just saying, no, that's voter registry.
August 27th, oh, I'm sorry, uh, August 27th, um, 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. Uh, in October, Saturday, October 22nd, 7:30 to 1:30. Monday, October 24th, 7:30 to 12. Tuesday, October 25th, 7:30 to 12. Wednesday, October 26th, 7:30 to 12:30. Thursday, October 27th, 7:30 to 12. And on Saturday, October 29th, from 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. Also, October 31st, 7:30 to 4:30 p.m. Tuesday, November 1st, 7:30 to 5. Wednesday, November 2nd, 7:30 to 5:30. And Thursday, November 3rd, from 7:30 to 4:30. Um, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Sure, before I make the motion, uh, that Saturday, August 27th, that's also for voter registration?
Voter registration session and early voting.
And the same thing for October 29th, voter registration? And just so the public knows, the voting will be in this building here?
Old Town Hall.
Old Town Hall. For early voting only.
For early voting and for the voter registration session, yes. And these are the minimum hours required by the law, and in the packet, there is a email from the Secretary of State's office confirming that those are compliant with the law.
Um, are there any discussion on this? With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the times and dates that, uh, our Town Clerk, Mark Pacheco, has just stated to us.
Uh, is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hall is an aye. Um, the third item is the assignment of police officers, um, at polling places requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen. I see this is two votes. One for the primary September 6th and the general election on November 8th, but also for the early voting, um, for the primary and the general election that will be held on the dates that was listed here.
I agree.
And I was curious as to the cost for those two police officers for the September 6th primary and the general election that will be held at Dayton Elementary School, so.
I, I don't have that number in front of me, but I can say with confidence that those numbers were budgeted, raised and appropriated in my budget with backup, um, and I was voted on the Finance Committee. It was reviewed, that money is there for two police officers. So I don't have it in front of me. I, I, I didn't anticipate that question, but it's, the money's there. And, um, the, the way I arrived at the figure, whenever that time was, was the average police officer, we just, they're all over the, the board. You might get a senior officer there that day. You might get a newer officer. I just took the average and, um, you know, with, and put it in. So there's, there is money in my budget for two officers. There'd be no extra cost to the taxpayer.
And that is traditionally what we usually have, is two officers.
Two, we'd have to have a conversation if it was a presidential, but for a state election, two officers is what I'm familiar with.
Thank you. Are there any questions in regards to the primary on September 6th and the general election on November 8th? With that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, the hiring of two officers for the primary on September 6th and the general election on November 8th.
I so move.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hall is an aye. Now, on the second item, early voting, this is something new. We've agreed upon it will be here. Uh, how much will this cost?
So I believe it will be roughly $8,000 for a police officer and $2,000 for an election worker. The election worker, he has to be here, obviously. That's an unfunded mandate. We should get reimbursed from the state for that. Police officer is not required by law. We will not be refunded for a police officer. Early voting's not new. Early voting, we did 2016, 2018, 2020. We had a police officer there for all of them, under my predecessor, the previous Town Clerk, Sue Maderos. In old, uh, in Town Hall, lower level, where the library is now. In old, in Town Hall lower level where the library is now, so we would displace for good reason, and I think it would be great here. So, previously, it was the Chief of Police power, so we would work with the Chief of Police, the election official. So, now it's in your hands to make this decision. So, I have a lot I can say about that, but to answer your question, I believe the cost will be around $8,000. Could be less if we get more junior officers, and if we happen to get all senior officers, it could be a little more, but based on my average cost, I think around $8,000.
I am concerned. $8,000 is a lot of money. I've spent a great deal of time on this issue today. Because $8,000 is a lot of money. I had a conversation this afternoon with the Chairman of the President of the Patrolman's Association, Ryan Richards. And there are other ways that this can be done, at no cost to the town. And Mr. Richards' offer was incredible. With that being said, I was wondering if any of my colleagues had anything that they would like to add before I?
Sure, what would be the purpose of having a police officer here on those early voting days?
There's a lot of reasons that we need a police officer there. This, this law was just passed, a little over a month ago. So, we weren't an expert on the law on June 22nd when it passed, we're getting advisory state by day. We need a police officer here for public safety. We need someone here to watch the entrance and the exit. We need a police officer here to protect not only the voter and the election worker. In this day and age with election integrity and people, voters who question the election process, we need a neutral third party who not only protects the voter, but the election workers. If there's no police officer there, it's he said, she said. You need a neutral third party. We have to move the ballots from Town Hall to Old Town Hall. There's no procedure in place other than, we've always had a police officer do it. They, they have to, by law, transport ballots to the polling location on Election Day, but there's nothing in the law on how to transport ballots to the early voting location that was just passed. So, what do you do? If you just have a police officer drop it off here, well, once of, now we have just an election worker, one person, or two if, if we get that, in custody of, of the ballots here. It could be questioned, what, what happened to the ballots? So, I'm getting on a tangent, but this, those are some of the reasons. A voter has the right to go in on early voting day and have the same amount of safety as they would going in on November, September 6th. He should feel just as safe. If you don't have a police officer here, then they're not getting the same rights, that voter is not getting the same rights as they would if they voted on September 6th. It's not whether I, somehow I feel about early voting, it's, it's not that issue, it's, this, this is a law, it was given to us five weeks ago. There's no procedure in place on how to take care of this issue. And a police officer is, is best for the voter, is best for the whole, we do not want to have the integrity of the election questions, at all.
Will you be here to supervise?
Not all the time, so remember, this is like a mini-election every day, leading up to the big day for elections. So, we have other things, we have birthdays, marriages. No, we're not here all the time, we, we are here as much as we can, but no, sometimes it's just an election worker and a police officer. The town clerk is not here at all times. We, if we get a police officer and an election worker, I plan to have someone from my office there as much as we can, because I, I'm not going to have two election workers there, because I understand there's a cost involved. But generally, the town clerk's not there if there's two election workers and a police officer, which is how it was in the past, but I'm, I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for one election worker, one police officer.
Wouldn't you think two election workers would be cheaper than a police officer?
Yes, and then it's he said, she said. The election worker says one thing, the voter says one thing, I want to, you need a triangle.
Two election.
Two election officials that re-
So, it's not be he said, she said, you have two voting officials and you guys been voting. So, why does it become a he said, she said?
It becomes he said, he said, she said, because they report to the town clerk. So, let's give a crazy scenario. A voter says, I saw, I saw Mark shove a ballot in his pocket, or, or something like that. There's not a neutral third party there who doesn't report to me, who can say, this is what I saw, I, I took an oath, you know, and I, that's one reason. Number two, safety, we've got to go back to safety and order. Have you ever been there when, I've been there, when we tell a voter, sorry, you're not on the voter's list? If you have one or two election workers there, it sometimes doesn't go very well, that the voter could get very offended. Or, this is going to be a primary election, if, if the voter thinks they're a registered Democrat or a registered Republican, and we tell them, we have you as a registered, not what you thought today, and I can only give you that ballot. Sorry, you came in for a Democrat ballot, but you're, you're a registered Republican. It gets heated, I mean, I've had conversations just with the early voting. People get upset because we say, if you want a ballot, vote by mail, you have to tell us what ballot you want. They get very upset. They don't want to tell me, they, but you can't have both ballots, you can only have one ballot for the primary. That's going to happen for early voting. And again, I would be putting the election workers at risk. They would be at risk if you leave one or two election workers there and no police officer. And something like that came up, a heated conversation, I know I'm on the voter's list, I, I know I'm a registered whatever. You know, and then again, that's he said, she said. There's no one there to, to give a, a third party objective report.
What is the role of the registrar of voters?
The, the law says that police, the police is under-
I asked, what is the role?
They, they have to ratify tonight the, the polling location, but they would have no, they wouldn't have a say in, the law's very clear on, on the, the police officer assignment, so. So, the, if, if we didn't-
Would they supervise an election?
No, because then, then if, if they're supervising an election, we have to do a recount, that, that registrar can't be impartial. So, that's why we don't like them in the polling location, because when it comes time for a recount, you need those registrars to, to look at the ballots and, and be the, basically they're the judge, they have a final say. This is, this is, you know, you called in to question this ballot, you know, this, this is what we say is, it was voted for X, Y, or Z. If you have a registrar supervising an election, then they, they would have no role in the recounts. And that's another scenario, if a voter walks in to Old Town Hall to come and vote, and they question something, let's say they can convince a judge that, you know, we had one election worker there and no police officer, and I saw something that was totally illegal. And they convince the judge for a recount, and that's going to be a lot more expensive than $8,000. I, I don't want to spend $8,000, I get it. That's why I came here to reduce the, the polling hours, to try to save us some money, but this is public safety, we've always done it. The only reason it's before you is the law changed, but the town clerk for the past three state elections did it. So, let me, let me just talk about the money. This wasn't put in my budget, I had no idea what the law was going to say. I was upfront about it, I talked to our town administrator, and I said, I have no idea what the law is going to say, I don't know how many hours, I don't know how many days. Do, do I pick a number, or what do we do? We decided, well, we'll, we'll deal with it then, so it's here. So, I think that was responsible, I didn't say, hey, I need $20,000 for early voting. You know, here it is, now I have a, now I know about what it's going to cost us, so we didn't just raise a number to the taxpayer. So, I think that was, you know, we're, we're being as transparent as we can. I feel very strongly about this, and I wanted, one more thing. I'm the Chief Election Officer of the town, I was voted to be that. This is what we, this is what I do. I think about this. I mean, I want the voter to have the best experience, and a police officer should be there. That's my judgment, and that's how I feel, I was voted. I'm here to represent the voter, and sure, I hope I'm wrong, and we have a super peaceful election season, nothing happens, but I still would be glad we spent the $8,000 for a police officer there, absolutely.
Mr. Pacheco?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Pacheco.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's another Pacheco here, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The assignment of police officers at polling places now requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen. It is in our hands. Secondly, the building commissioner and fire chief, they condemn properties. The treasurer seizes property and places liens on property. The assessors office dearly handles complaints about being overtaxed. And disgruntled residents who don't get the abatements that they request. None of them have ever requested police protection. There is no police officer on a regular basis at Town Hall. The number of people who used to vote in a town election is minimal. The number of people, based on 25 years of elections, where we have maybe 1,000 people show up, indicates that early voting is not going to see a significant number of people. Today, we were given an opportunity for the officers to come and transport the ballots to Town Hall, a secure location at, during their shift, whenever it finished. I understand what you're saying about public safety, but if that is the question, then we should be looking at police officer on a regular basis at Town Hall, because the statistical likelihood of something happening at Town Hall would probably be greater than the very few dates and times that we have here.
Can I respond to that?
Certainly.
2016 is the first time we had early voting. I went on the Secretary of State's office. Dyson had 5,299 voters at the time, and there was 1,026 early ballots cast. That's 19% of the voters, the Secretary of State's office-
Was that in person, or was that by mail?
It was a combination of both, early, that's as far as I can distinguish it, so they could have done it by mail or come in person, early voting. Secretary of State's office is putting commercials on, the popularity of vote by mail and in-person early voting is increasing. Having a police officer is not a new concept at early voting. The last town election, as you say, that had, did not have a lot of turnout, well, as a person who runs the election, I was so distracted by the number of complaints I had by public safety that I had to ask the Chief of Police, the police have an officer stand out there the whole day, because I'm having so many people come in and say that there's problems with people breaking the 150-foot rule, harassing voters, congregating, it, it was like, I, I needed to focus on the election, because if someone questions what happens on the election, I should be there for it. My first election, I had three weeks on the job, it was a town election, it had low turnout, voter turnout, as you said, we just had a pandemic. And just a really quick story, we had a resident there who was doing a sticker campaign, all right? Not only did I need the Board of Health to come down and talk about him, this resident getting, you know, a little close, you know, the six foot for voters, I had to have police help me a couple of times because he just wasn't complying. We don't know who's going to walk in the door on early voting. We do not know who's going to, I hope it's a great day, but my election workers, who I also advocate for, should, should feel safe, and if they don't know who walks in the door, I get the police departments right down the street. But we don't know how busy of a day they're going to have. I'd like to know, no matter how busy they are, we have a detail here who's going to keep them safe. And I understand other departments do, but I'm the Chief Election Official for the town. I am the subject matter expert on elections, I'm asking you to spend the $8,000 for a police officer so my election workers can be safe? We do not know what it's going to bring that day, and we have done it for the past three state elections with no issues. It's becoming a, an issue here, it's in front of you, it's becoming an issue, and it's, I'm almost offended that I have to explain it this much.
I represent the taxpayers. Was this money budgeted in your budget?
It was not, and it was transparent, and I could have raised, thrown a number at the dartboard, and I said, I have no idea what it's going to cost. We don't know what the law's going to say, they posted after-town meeting. We had no idea, so it was responsible, not me, I'm, I, I talked about this, I was transparent, I didn't know what the right thing to do was. We talked to the town administrator, and I had a minimum, talked about what do we do, we'll deal with it then, and here we are.
Where is the money going to come from, to pay for?
At the time, we talked about reserve fund, but we also have a special town meeting on your agenda tonight, and we can go there first, and if, we have a reserve fund. And if, remember, if something happens, you are all taking the liability on your hands, not only for an election that I oversee, but for our election workers and our voters. I just feel very strongly about it, I, I think about this a lot, this, what can go wrong on Election Day? That's what keeps me up at night, because I, I'd like to have a job too, and if an election goes wrong, I don't think I will, and this is just very important to me. This, a lot of towns, Mr. Hall, do things by tradition, they're tradition-based. This is a tradition that we've done for the past three state elections, I ask, we continue the tradition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pacheco, I want you to understand, I do ask tough questions.
Absolutely, I can take it.
Based on my vote, on the answers to those questions. So, please don't take it personal.
If I become passionate, it's just because I care about the subject, and I hope not to come off, it's just something that's important to me, that's all.
You know, the other thing with the questions, it, I hope, and I believe it does, give information to the other, my colleagues, in making a determination on how we're going to vote.
Absolutely.
I would feel a little bit more comfortable if I knew where that $8,000 was coming from. Because knowing ahead of time that the voters are on board with this makes a vote easy. But the uncertainty and the risk that either FinCon or a specific group shows up at the special town meeting and says no, puts us in the quandary that we were in, if you remember what happened with the $8,000.
I do, it's the magic number.
With the Board of Assessors.
Yes.
So, with that being said, Mr. Pacheco?
Is this Mr. Pacheco? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So, it's interesting that you talked about the annual town meeting, that you got complaints about people being less than 150 feet away, and also people being harassed, and you came before the Board, asked for additional signs, so you could put those signs up to keep people 150 feet away. You got numerous complaints, and there were two police officers there, and nobody was moved. I was one of those complainers, because I saw people harassing people, and I saw people less than 150 feet away from the, the door. So, why on early voting would I be supporting spending $8,000 for a police officer? When if something did happen, you call 911, you get a police officer here right away, there's already been an agreement. My understanding is that dropping the ballots off, there'll be a police officer, at the end of the day, picking up the ballots, bringing it back over to the, and putting it in the safe. So, I'm not supporting additional $8,000, taxpayers' money for this, absolutely on election days. But I would just advocate that when people go up to you and ask that you have people moved, and you have police officers there that can do that, please do it, because they're not supposed to be there 150 feet away, and you came before us asking for those signs to make sure that people are 150 feet away.
I, I just came before you and told you how I asked the Chief of Police to have a police officer there the whole day, isn't that acting?
No, because that police, the police officer did not move the people. They had somebody there, fine, I mean, unless they were told to move people, they're not, they're not responsible for moving the people. But you've had people, numerous people go up to you and tell you that there was people, as they're walking in, being harassed, and people within the 150 feet, which is, as you know, is not legal, so. I agree with, with Mr. Karen, say, I would support, you have two election workers, I'm surprised you're only going to have one election worker here, quite frankly, one person left by themselves, but I would support two election workers, it's going to be a lot cheaper than hiring a detail, police detail, so I won't be supporting that.
Mr. Karen, do you have any?
Why don't you just keep the voting at Town Hall and solve three quarters of the problems like you said tonight?
Where, where would you suggest that? Because I thought of them all, and they're not good options.
I, I don't know the Town Hall that well to say you can put it in this ridiculous spot. But it would seem to me that we'd have enough space at Town Hall that a corner can't be taken to have it be for early voting.
We can't have it in front of my office. It's, there's a potential to block the exit. I've talked to the building commissioner about that. So that doesn't work. I guess, through my conversations, we could have it in that lobby.
Yeah.
But that's the main entrance that people come in and out of Town Hall.
So that has traffic that comes around Town Hall.
But I, I do the election, so let me just tell you that, sure, there's not that much traffic. And sure, maybe you want to say not a lot of people come in for early voting. But I've done in-person absentee voting, and I see that, yeah, maybe it's not that busy, but everyone comes in at once. So for the VP election, I wasn't busy that day, but everyone came in at once. We had, we would tell people to get back and let the voters vote in private, and we were moving the line down. Everyone came at once. I mean, they come during their lunch break, they come right after they get out of work. It's, I call it the invisible bus. They all come in right at the same time. And so if we have them congregating in front of the front door, maybe it's fine with the building commissioner or whoever, but it's not a good voting experience for the voter. You're voting, people are like, what's going on? They're confused. It's, it's not professional. We were displaced from downstairs. That's a room. I request a room, not a vestibule. And I just am very offended by the police officer comments. I'm not a police officer. If the police officer's there, and he, he sees the sign, we talked about it, and the sign's now moved, I don't think that's a problem with me. I'm sorry. I, I put a police officer out there, and people of safety, I'm not trained in. That's as good as, that's what else can I do?
Did you tell the police officers to keep people 150 feet away from the door?
They measured me in the morning. I told them the comments repeatedly of the complaints that I was getting, and to the point where we had a police officer stand out there the whole day. I'm, again, I'm not a police officer. I, I got the comments. I forwarded them. I'm happy going record on that. That's, again, I have an election to run. What goes on in the parking lot is the reason we have a police officer.
I, I think we're getting away from, what's at hand. What happens on a general election where there's groups of people standing on one side and the other, and numerous people in between, and whether you're supposed to be 150 feet, it's not what's at hand. It's whether or not we should spend $8,000, or if your argument is worth $8,000 to the town. I, could there be some, a potential for some disruption? I think it's minor. I'd rather see two workers here as opposed to a police detail. Police details are intimidating as well. That might keep some people away. I'm going to be with Ken and say, I wouldn't make that motion to spend the $8,000.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Karen, today I met with Commissioner Jim Agiah in regards to the possibility of having it in the lobby. And he supports Mr. Pacheco, my, my Pacheco, in his request to have it here for a number of reasons. One, there is currently a remodeling project going on in Town Hall upstairs, where people would be coming in to vote. Secondly, if you go upstairs, there is only a women's bathroom, which means if a male came in, they would have to migrate through the building, downstairs to use the facilities. Three, there is a sacred chair that is in the lobby.
Toss it.
That cannot be disturbed.
Sure.
That will be coming before us after the voting for its final placement. With that concern for that ancient chair, historical chair, Mr. Agiah was concerned. Space-wise, the movement of people, you know, with ladders and construction equipment going through there. So he recommended that we have it here. And I, I would totally support Mr. Pacheco, my Pacheco, on that. In regards to the two election workers as opposed to one, I totally support that. With that being said, in regards to the issue of two election workers, is that our call?
I'm not sure it's our call, so I, I don't think it's our call.
That's certainly not.
Okay. I respect that. We'll leave it to your judgment. On the issue of the $8,000 for the police officers, I will entertain a motion for approval of the assignment of police officers for the early voting for the primary and general election.
I think we already, did we already vote on the having a police officer for the general election?
No, 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 at the-
Early voting. Just for early voting.
Early voting for the primary and early voting for the general election. With that being said, the motion has been defeated. Mr. Pacheco, we've approved your election here. You determine how many poll workers you need, but there will be no police officers assigned to this.
So you started off your conversation about transporting the ballots here in a way, and Detective Richards, I'd like to hear if there are any support from the Board of Selectmen to transport the ballots to Old Town Hall, because I certainly as town clerk will not transport ballots. I'll be on Channel 7 News. It just doesn't look good. So how are the ballots going to get here?
The ballots, how are they going to get here?
How are they going to get here? So they're in a secured vault at Town Hall.
And they will be transported by the police.
They will?
Here and picked up at the end of the day. Yes.
Do, do I need, do you have to do a motion on that? I, I'm just asking. I don't know, because it says by law we need your support for police. So if they're going to transport it, does the Board of Selectmen have to vote for that? I don't know the answer.
I-
Just having a police officer come up and pick up, you know, employee one just for four hours, and being on a four-hour shift to just-
It's going to be a police officer on duty.
On duty anyway.
Anyway. So I mean, if he's looking for a motion, I'm not opposed to making that motion, because I don't, I think he wants to protect himself, you know, the other Mr. Pacheco, wants to protect himself in the event that a police officer isn't here. He's not going to grab the ballots and bring them over here. So he probably wants on record that we're approving that a, a police officer who's on duty pick up the ballots from Town Hall, bring them to Old Town Hall that morning of the early voting and primary and the election, general election, and also to pick up those ballots at the end of the day and, and bring them back to Town Hall and witness them being put in the safe. I guess that's, that's how it's done, I guess.
That's the procedure that we have now, yes.
So I'll make that motion if that's, if it's-
Yes, it is.
Okay. Want me to repeat the whole thing, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we have a police officer who's on duty, transport the ballots from Town Hall, from the safe at Town Hall to Old Town Hall in the morning prior to the opening for voting, and at the end of the day to return those ballots, at the end of voting, return those ballots to, from Old Town Hall to Town Hall to the safe, and that it be a duty police officer, an on-duty police officer.
Do I have a second on the motion made in second? All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you.
I just want to add that I, I do agree that it should be here also, that the voting should, early voting should be here. And the other thing the public should know, that you can vote by mail.
You can vote by mail, yes.
We've all got that in the mail, so I know I'm, I'll be doing that. So I don't know if it makes your job any easier, whatever, but people can vote by mail.
Well, I know I went over, way over my allotted five minutes of time, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say, Lieutenant Cronin?
Yes.
To your men, a deep thank you for them to agree, because what they've agreed to is save the taxpayers of this community $8,000. And that's deeply appreciated.
Yeah, I commend the union for that. I was aware of that earlier. And listening to this, a couple of things I respect and appreciate. One is everybody's role. We all have our lanes to stay in and make sure that we work together. The other thing is open and healthy dialogue.
Good.
It's great.
And the other one is Detective Richard, I respect and appreciate what he says and what he brings as representation of the union. So, yeah, I, I thank you for that. Now I'll make sure I pass that along.
Deeply appreciate it. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Mr. Tavarez, I want to thank you for your patience.
And his family.
And family as well. I had the privilege of meeting Mason Tavarez one afternoon downstairs in our temporary library. And I was curious, because he was working diligently. And in talking to the assistant librarian, she informed me that that happens quite often. And that Mason also is one of the library's top volunteers, and certainly has provided the most time of any youth working in the library, and is among the top volunteers overall for the library. And I didn't ask Joshua, also Tavarez, no relation, how Mason's over, well over 300 hours of volunteer service over the last six years to the Dighton Public Library. I know you have adult volunteers. I would ask, is Mason among one of the top of all your volunteers, adult as well?
Yes.
Mason, thank you. Dighton is a community of volunteers. You know, we have three people on a park and recreation department who put in incredible hours. They ran the fire protest. You would think they were a full-time department, you know, the things, but they do. And they don't give a damn. That's one example of many, many people who do incredible things for this town. And you're among them. You know, we talk about people like a park and rec, or God love her Nancy Gulak, who puts in incredible hours to this town. I would put you in that same list. You know, there were a lot of youth today who were concerned about themselves, to be on the cell phone, or to be playing video games. But you're willing to give up your time to help the town and to help the library and the people in Dighton. I want to thank you for that. Before I have you come up with your certificate, I'm also going to ask Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Karen, if they have any comments that they would like to add.
I haven't met you, Mason, but I've heard a lot of good things about you. So your parents should be very proud of you. You're the future of Dighton, this country, and it's good to see you volunteering like this. Because not as the chairman said, not every young person does that. You can play video, video games and cell phones, so you can still do that, but-
You put in hours to the Dighton Public Library, so I want to thank you.
Mr. Karen?
When I was a youngster, I was forced to volunteer. And it was at the library, which was right across the street from my house, so, but I actually enjoyed it. I never told my mother that. But thank you, sir, for your service.
Mr. Mullin, the town administrator, you have a pulse of not only the community, but the different departments. And I was wondering if you wish to add to the accolades of this young man?
So, yeah, though, as, as you know, Mason, I just wanted really to congratulate and thank you as well. The library, you know, I mean, we have many, we have many, many town departments, but, you know, but I, but I always refer to everything that the library does and what they offer. Oh, you know, and the interaction, oh, you know, that, oh, you know, employees have our patron and our youth every day, it's lovely. Oh, like one of the most, one of the most front and color-facing parts of what we do as a town. You know, and it's always in, oh, you know, oh, you know, that, that always really resonates with me because, you know, what, oh, you know, happens in our library, what has happened in the library in the past, what is happening now, you know, on the other side of the campus, and what is going to happen, oh, and the amazing things that are going to happen in the future, really gives, you know, our community the identity, the fabric that it has and who we are. Oh, you know, and your involvement, oh, you know, and your contributions to help really make that fabric. I'll get everything, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, I would ask that Mr. and Mrs. Tavarez and Mason, if you could come up. This could be a correct moment, so. The Board of Selectmen would like to recognize your efforts. The certificate of recognition, we, the undersigned, do hereby recognize Mason Tavarez, to whom we extend our sincere gratitude for generously volunteering well above 300 hours this time over the past six years to the Dighton Public Library. With his positive attitude and willingness to take on any task is greatly appreciated. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the great seal of the Town of Dighton to be affixed on this 27th day of July 2022. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dighton, thank you for your service. If you could pull a moment.
So we got a picture of everyone? So I'm the town administrator, and the chief of Kevin, and so the chief photographer. Thank you very much.
We sent you a cloud. How old is he on your show? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Medal of Honor Resolution. Kevin Perry, could you come to the podium, please?
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. Brief history for everyone out there. As you're aware, Private Frederick Anderson is buried in Dighton. He was a Civil War Medal of Honor recipient. Last year, his family came all the way from South Dakota to formally present his Medal of Honor to the Town of Dighton. At that time, we did not have what we considered a secure location to place that medal and also have it available for public viewing. We're now in a position to remove it from the vault in Town Hall and place it in a secure storage in the police station, which would also make it available for public viewing. What we put together for you, and I, I provided copies, is basically a group of us met informally, and we're going to meet again on the 1st of August. I have posted that meeting, because the first one, as I said, was an informal meeting. We just got together, people and I- We just got together, people that I listed here, and said, how can we go about moving it to that secure location? Which, by the way, there was a great deal of work done by Mr. Aggar and the Highway Department to make that happen, so credit to them. I put together a, we, I'm sorry, put together a proposed agenda to make that move, to make a formal move, because it is a Medal of Honor from the Town Hall here to the police station. I took the liberty of meeting with Chief McDonald and discussing it with him. And we also met with Lieutenant, yeah, anyway, I'm sorry. And they can support what we propose. What we propose is this. We'll depart the Dyton Town Hall with the medal, and we put down the two or three police cruises or two cruises in one military vehicle. I believe we're going to have an opportunity to have a vintage Jeep. We planned to put a police car in the front, the Jeep. Any veterans that want to be in this little procession and a police car in the back of the procession, and the chief said they would handle the traffic down to the police station. We would march into the community room with drum support by Mr. John Hershey. And then we provided a proposed resolution, which I believe you gentlemen are going to look at this evening and agree or disagree on. If you agree to it, we would ask that one of you present that resolution during that day, which would be 11 August, okay? And then Mr. Robert Woods is going to provide some insight into Private Anderson's early life. Fascinating story, okay? He was one of the, what they call the train orphans, who would just carted around literally the country until somebody said, yeah, I need a kid to work on a farm. Okay, here's your kid, work on a farm. That's part of Mr. Anderson's history. And then I plan to address very briefly current Medal of Honor criteria, Mr. Anderson's valor at the Battle of Globe Tavern, and the write-up he was, that, for the Medal of Honor that was given to him, as well as remarks that were made by the commander of the Army of the Potomac, General Meade, regarding Mr. Anderson's service. And then we'll go put the Medal of Honor in secure storage, myself and Chief McDonald. And then we'll play taps, and then refreshments in the community room, and Alice's restaurant once again comes through, okay? So that's the proposal, gentlemen, for the agenda. And in front of you also, I believe, and I hope you've had an opportunity to read the proposed resolution. I'm sorry. Lieutenant, sorry. I'm all, things slip my mind. So that's it, gentlemen. Comments, questions?
I don't have any questions. Unfortunately, I'm away on August 11th, so I won't be available. I was there when they dedicated the bridge going by, I won't be available, unfortunately.
I will be there. I granted time off the line, major, and I will be there.
Terrific. As I said, it's most appropriate that the Board of Selectmen, by making that resolution, I believe, also read the resolution at that time, so thank you. Do you, gentlemen, do you, number one, agree with the proposed agenda as we've stated? There are some holes to be filled in, we recognize that. Thank you, Chief, Alice is, we're still looking for the trumpeter for taps, John Hershey.
I need to help. I can help, I believe I can help you with that.
Okay.
I will make a phone call. The deceased tomorrow, I have a neighbor who has played at other events for the town, and I will reach out to him and ask if he could give this a
And in addition,
I will charge to the town.
Mr. Veterans Agent Haig and I have had some discussions regarding, you know, the final placement in the case, and then a plaque, and we still need to discuss this with the committee to put together, a plaque with the word of Private Anderson's citation, and then another plaque, which would go in the case, that addresses General Meade's comments on Private Anderson's valor of that day and how significant it was to a Union victory at the Battle of Globe Tavern. It, matter of fact, was probably the key element in that being a Union victory.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, I don't think they're whole.
I think it's a great source.
It is, oh. You know, I'm learning, as a former history teacher, so I definitely appreciate. There is an incredible amount of history in this town. Incredible. Native Americans, distinguished veterans through all the wars. Big part of what Dyton is all about. I will entertain, actually, two motions. First, to approve the resolution as presented this evening. Would it be appropriate to read it at this time?
Sure.
Be it resolved, the United States Army Medal of Honor recipient, Private Frederick Charles Anderson's Medal of Honor. Whereas Private Frederick Charles Anderson, a Civil War hero and one of the first ever Medal of Honor recipients, was awarded the Medal of Honor on September 13th, 1864 by General George Meade, commander of the Army of the Potomac. A conspicuous gallantry and good conduct displayed in capturing on the field of battle flags from the enemy. And whereas Private Frederick Charles Anderson's family gifted his Medal of Honor to the Town of Dyton during a ceremony held on March 30th, 2021, in order to preserve Private Anderson's patriotism and dedication to his country and to share his integral role in the Civil War. And whereas Private Frederick Charles Anderson was laid to rest in the Dyton Unitarian Church Cemetery. And the Dyton Board of Selectmen, representing the residents of the Town of Dyton, determined that Private Anderson's wartime valor should be honored, representing his Medal of Honor for public viewing. And now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton, do hereby resolve that Private Frederick Charles Anderson's Medal of Honor shall be on permanent display in a secure case in the lobby of the Dyton Police Station from the 11th day of August 2022 forward. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the great seal of the Town of Dyton to be affixed on this 27th day of July 2022. I will entertain a motion for approval of this resolution.
I'd like a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the resolution as read.
Second.
Motion made second, all those available, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Carron?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is a aye. The second resolution is to approve that the event be filmed by the Dyton Capitol personnel. The only question that I have is, have you spoken with the Capitol?
I have not. I wanted to run it by you folks first. If it's, if it is possible to do that.
Mr. Marlowe?
Is that during the day, sir?
Yes, it is.
Unfortunately, I'm down to two people, basically myself, so I'm not sure that can be done. I work full-time during the day, so.
Well, what I wanted to do was get approval, and then I was going to speak with you. But, I mean, we, we'll just have to play that by ear. If it's possible, terrific. If it's not, it's not, you know, it's reality.
Let me see if someone can run the camera or something, see if we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The only question I have. Mr. Marlowe, do you have funding in your budget for this?
We do have funding for equipment to keep the equipment going, for cable, yes.
Okay. I don't believe you need our approval. If you have, if the funding is present, Mr. Pacheco?
I don't think there's any harm in making a motion that if cable is available, that they be there on August 11th.
Yeah, just, I said we want to keep everything topped on here.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion, if cable is available on August 11th, that they videotape this event.
Second.
Motion made second, all those available, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Carron? Chairman Hall is a aye.
If I may take another minute of your time, Chairman Hall, you mentioned in the resolution, capture the flag. If I could expand on that for just a moment for all those people that are viewed tonight's meeting, but not be able to attend the ceremony. You know, today, we have instant communication. You know, I can get on my cellphone, talk to somebody halfway around the world. Let's roll the clock back 160 years, back to 1862, where, you know, any contingency operation, whether it be military, police, or fire, communication, command, control are key. And the key of the key is communication. Back then, on the battlefield, communication consisted of sending a runner, literally with a piece of paper or a message in his brain from commander to commander. Or you had a flag bearer from each individual unit that would stand on the, well-protected flag bearer would stand on the top of a hill and do whatever they did to send the information down to their particular unit. What Frederick Anderson did and his companions, they fought through a very heavily defended area. They captured the flag of the 27th South Carolina Regiment, and they captured the bearer and the flag itself and took it off the battlefield. That action did not allow the 27th South Carolina Infantry Regiment to communicate with the rest of the Confederate Army. As such, there was a key road area that Union forces and Confederate forces were battling over. And as a result of that unit not being directed, the Carolina unit not being directed to that crossroads, that is what tipped the battle in favor of the Union forces. So when we say, well, he captured a flag, he took an entire unit off the battlefield. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
I'd be remiss to not say Tim Ryan's was very well involved in having this brought to the Town of Dyton. And I think with all his help and assistance, we would not have had that Medal of Honor in town.
And now, we will address all shortly.
And I want to thank Veterans Agent for all of his work on this also, Mr. Haig.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Ryan will be a part of this ceremony, I hope. Thank you, Mr. Haig. Mr. Perry, thank you, Mr. Haig, thank you so much. Mr. Mullin, I see that there is a hand raised.
So that, just the mouth, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. At this time, we will entertain public input. Before we begin public input, I'd like to go over some links in regards to each person who wishes to participate will be allotted by this time. Secondly, any item that involves town apartment heads or personnel, those comments should be addressed to, through the Town Administrator's office. And any town employee that has business to come before us should go to the Board of Selectmen office and ask that it be placed on the agenda. With that being said, I will entertain any requests for time to speak on issues that involve the town. Yes. Mrs. Timlin, could you come up, state your name and your address, please, for the record?
Timothy Toulon, 1943 Massasoia Road. I came back, I came here in May with my predecessor trustee, Mike Brady, back in May, to request the erection of a gate at the end of Massasoia Road to prevent unauthorized access to the area known as the pit. The gate was not forthcoming. Since that request, I've learned that an individual owns the land in the area known as the pit and has designs on building a number of homes back there. As a homeowner and a trustee of my homeowners' association, I strongly believe that the intended entrance to the dirt road leading into the pit was from Milk Street via an overgrown paper road and not the homeowners' association property at the end of the cul-de-sac. Certain individuals took it upon themselves to widen that narrow entrance without homeowners' association permission, leading to the trouble that brought me here in the first place. I asked the Board of Selectmen and/or any legal abutters to consider making arrangements to clear said paper road from Milk Street to the dirt road. It is my intention to ask the planning board for permission to place a large boulder at the opening at the end of the cul-de-sac. This will prevent any unauthorized vehicles from entering the pit through our neighborhood. This would still allow dirt bikes and quads access. All we ask for in our neighborhood is that dirt bikes and quads be respectful of our neighborhood when riding through. Legal abutters, police, and fire.
There's no meeting right now. Oh, definitely.
Some side joke, can you mute yourself? Oh, I just did, right. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Toulon.
That's okay. Legal abutters, police, and fire should access the road where it was meant to be accessed, from Milk Street, not through our neighborhood. Thank you for considering my request.
Are there any? Mr. Timlin, it's my understanding that the request to initiate that approval, you first need to meet with the planning board.
Yes.
What makes it a little questionable is that the developer and property owner is not formally coming for that to initiate his project. What complicates it is the fact that there is a building or a building that probably explains why that developer hasn't come before the planning board. The first step would be speaking with the planning board. And then, once you've had their approval coming before us, so if you could take care of that. On, in regards to the boulder and the request, the road that was widened was done by a governmental body that is legislated and approved by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that is separate from the Town of Dyton. So in regards to that, you would have to take it before the water district. In regards to the gate and the rock situation, I believe that is a discussion for another time and not before this board, based on, my colleagues could correct me if I'm wrong, the general consensus of how the board felt about spending town money on that.
Well, this proposal, I had planned to see the planning board last week. I got COVID, so I kind of got set back a week. So I do plan to ask them permission next week.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there any other public input? Okay, announcements, Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, I have an announcement that is not on the, the Titan area, Vietnam Vet and Dyton's Lions Club will have a free concert. Now, I'm a member of the Dyton's Lions Club, not an officer, I don't get paid, but I'm a member. They're having a free concert on August 6th, 2022, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Pavilion over there, live entertainment, Eddie and the Exciters will be there, the Villanaires, if anybody The Villanaires, if anybody's gone to the Vietnam Vet's, uh, events that they've, and the car shows that they've had behind Town Hall, they've been playing there. They play music from the sixties and seventies, my generation. And Fran, uh, Pen will do guitar and vocals. Food and drinks will be available for purchase and it will be rain or shine on that day. The other announcements, for the Dyton Water District effective July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, all outside watering is prohibited at all times. This includes all addresses at all times. Plants may be watered by hand only. No new irrigation systems are permitted on any home. The Dyton Public Library will host an improv for teens event at the lower level of Town Hall on Saturday, July thirtieth at eleven A M. Please contact the library to reserve your spot at five oh eight, six six nine, six four two one. The Forty-third Pen Mass Challenge will take place on August sixth and seventh. Please support your friends with a donation as this event represents over sixty-four percent of the Ginyu Fire Annual Revenue. So they go through the town of Dyton, they go from, I believe, it's from the high school, uh, down Horton Street, down William Street, down Santa Street, across the bridge. So if anybody wants a whole sign supporting these riders, that would be appreciated and also donating the money. District Attorney Thomas Quinn will be at the Lincoln Village Community Center, three hundred Lincoln Avenue, on Friday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, at one thirty P M. to address seniors and elder reviews. Please call the Dyton Council on Aging at five zero eight, six six nine, six two seven two to sign up. Walk-ins are also welcome to attend, sponsored by the Council on Aging and the Dyton Police Department. The Town Bank Food Bank Distribution will be held next on August twentieth, twenty twenty-two, located at Town Hall, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue to lower level. And that is at eight o'clock. Dyton Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day, January August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, is from nine to two P M. At the Dyton Transfer Station, three sixty-five Fremont Street. Proof of residency is required and a list of board and committee vacancies. I have a D S on there.
I can read them if you want.
I have, I'm sorry. Uh, board committees vacancies updated as of July twentieth, twenty-two. Beacon Television Committee needs two members, Commission on Disability needs three members, Conservation Commission needs one member, Historical Commission needs three members, Open Space Committee needs two, and the Solid Waste Committee, uh, needs one member. That's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Town administrators report.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, it's been a busy few weeks. There's been, uh, just really referenced, uh, by tonight's agenda, there's been a lot happening. But I have to say, one of the highlights was actually last Thursday, uh, when we welcomed the newest member of the DPD Oki. Um, and I just want to really, I want to, I want to thank Lieutenant Cronin, Detective Richards, um, Ian S R L Hathaway, and Officer Bennett as well. Uh, Oki is just an amazing addition to our town, uh, uh, to the community. Um, he'll be amazing, he'll be amazing for the schools as well. And, uh, you know, like I was hopeful that, um, he'd be able, uh, as a comfort dog to make regular, uh, to make regular stops to, uh, Town Hall and the Town Administrator's Office. Still waiting to hear from the department on that request, but, uh, so, but I just want to welcome and thank, I can thank everyone involved in bringing Oki to Dyton, so thank you.
I did ask also that that comfort dog reports of us at the end of our meetings, the lines have concluded.
Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah.
I believe it's a comfort dog, but didn't respond to that also.
That's all right, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just adding on, Oki, I want to range you, by the way, so I'm probably going to call the dog Ranger. What you can buy is a fundraiser. Is that the Dyton Police Department or is it the Dyton Union, uh, Police Officers Union that has a fundraiser for the dog, for the dog?
The union is sponsoring the fundraiser. From my understanding, S R L Hathaway is, um, in the works of, uh, creating an additional, uh, not-for-profit for programs for Oki. Uh, but right now it is sponsored by the union, yes.
So you can buy T-shirts either for adults or kids that has Oki's name on it. You can buy, uh, something to put a drink in.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a good fundraiser, so. Just wanted to add that, I'm sorry.
Sorry, thank you.
No, no, that's okay. Thank you very much. Old business. Um, would you discuss an act on the candidate for appointment to the Chief of Police? Mr. Mullin?
Uh, I, I, yes, I, yes, thank you, Chairman. Uh, but two weeks ago, um, af, uh, after a process that began, um, in mid-March, uh, the board interviewed, uh, the board interviewed, uh, the only internal candidate, uh, for the position, uh, of Chief of Police, Lieutenant Sean Cronin. And, um, um, and tonight, uh, as a follow-up to that interview, uh, the board has, uh, the board has, for its sake consideration, the appointment, uh, of the Chief of Police on its agenda. So, uh, so I will turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board.
This evening, I believe we will be asking Mr. Cronin, or given the opportunity, asking the questions that we may have of you. I also would like to read into the record the summary report of the consulting firm that we had that also interviewed Mr. Cronin, Public Safety Consultants of Bloxwood, Massachusetts, and their assessment of the candidate, Sean Cronin. Mr. Cronin is an experienced police department supervisor with the critical skills, knowledge, and abilities required of a Massachusetts police chief. He currently serves as a lieutenant of the Dyton Police Department, where he has worked since two thousand and six. While serving the town of Dyton, he has worked in various supervisory capacities, to include his current assignment as police lieutenant. As lieutenant, he is the executive officer of the Police and Communications Department. In his capacity, Lieutenant Cronin's responsibilities range from managing department operations to writing and implementing department-wide policies. He is also knowledgeable and experienced in building and administering the approximate two-point-two million dollar police and communications budget. Lieutenant Cronin grew up in and currently resides in Dyton, which affords him a unique insight into the town and the needs of the community. Lieutenant Cronin is knowledgeable with Massachusetts Police Reform Legislation and has indicated that he would like to see the Dyton Police Department become an accredited agency. His professional presentation, command presence, and delivery of responses indicate he possesses the professional attribute consistent with a Massachusetts police chief. The assessment team ranking for Mr. Cronin placed him in the highly well-qualified category. If chosen, P S C recommends that he season police chief mentor Lieutenant Cronin as he transitions to this new role. His membership, which is the, uh, Massachusetts Police Association, is it Police Chief Association?
Yes.
Will assist the new chief in the broadening of his leadership and supervisory skills as it relates to police personnel and community policies outside of the current norm of the Dyton Police Department. P S C also recommends that his chief, he consistently participates in local, county, and state chief meetings and trainings. These types of meetings will provide the new chief with an opportunity to further his professional development within the larger enforcement leadership community. It will also afford him the opportunity to learn from sharing administrative experiences with other chiefs that are in similar situations. At our last meeting, we also heard from the Dyton Patrolmen's Association and that they unanimously gave their support for the candidacy of Sean Cronin as their next police chief. We also heard from the Chief of the Fire Department, who is here this evening, Chris McGee. And as one of the leaders of the emergency management team, Mr. McGee, Chief McGee, highly recommends Sean Cronin for the police position of police chief. Mr. Cronin has also gained the respect of many other of the departments in this town. And one person who has publicly come out in support of his candidacy is Commissioner, Building Commissioner James Agia, who will work very closely with Chief Cronin and with Chief McGee in certain emergencies involving structures. And he feels very confident in working with the Chief of Cronin. At this time, I would ask if any, uh, members have any questions for the chief.
I have no question, but I have a comment that, uh, my other job, as I mentioned before, I worked at the courthouse in, uh, might have been sergeant then, uh, was the court representative for the Dyton Police Department. I would handle the jury session and many times, so Lieutenant Cronin would have to come in, and, but he was always prepared. When he was on the witness stand, he was always professional. I was always impressed, uh, with his, uh, his attitude and his ability to, uh, be able to present evidence in, in cases. So this is the twenty-first century, and I think he's the right person for this position. He's very knowledgeable. He's gone for his master's degree. He's, uh, very savvy when it comes to the internet and, uh, computers, which I think is something that we need. So I look forward to, uh, working with you. Unfortunately, I won't be around when you retire, but, uh, I just ask that you be safe and, uh, this impacts the family also, as you know. Uh, so make sure that you also take into consideration your family. But, uh, I'm very happy that, uh, you're going to be given this opportunity, so thank you for applying.
Thank you. Mr. Jacob, you have longevity in your family?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mom left to be a hundred and six.
Hundred and four.
Hundred and four.
May she rest in peace.
I wouldn't be so sure. You, you may not live to see this, we tell.
My mother had, so. But anyway, I would love to be around. Don't get me wrong.
Mr. Carron?
I was writing some notes before I came here, and I've only known you for just a few months. And, uh, I think this is the perfect opportunity for you and for the town. And I'm excited when I go back. Uh, I think it's, it's great. And, um, I think all this, the hard work that you've done has led to this moment, and I, I think you should enjoy your efforts.
Thank you.
Come on.
I was very impressed when Ryan Richards, as a representative of the Policemen's Union, came up and endorsed your candidacy. It is so important teamwork and spirit of cooperation with the chief. I experienced that recently with negotiations, the fireworks contract, and the relationship that Chief McGee has with his men. It made contract negotiations a very pleasant and efficient process. It didn't take a lot of time. I envision, based on the conversations that I've had with Ryan, is that continuing with the police department? And that's good for the town of Dyton. With that being said, um, I will entertain a motion for the appointment of.
So Sean Cronin to the position of Chief of Police pending a successful contract negotiation?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion. I'm very pleased to make a motion that the board of selectmen approved the appointment of Lieutenant Sean Cronin as our new, uh, Chief of Police in the town of Dyton, with the condition that we be able to work out a contract.
Do you have a second?
That'd be conditioned upon the retirement of Chief McDonald. He hasn't retired yet, so.
It's an honor to second.
Motion made second, Mr. Jacob?
Aye.
Mr. Carron?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye.
Don't worry about me for a hundred.
I will be back because I know I need to.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Trails feasibility study contract, Horace Lee, Horace Lee Witten Group of Sandwich, Massachusetts. Are they present here this evening?
No, no, they're not, Mr. Chairman. Now, this, uh, this contract with the Horace Lee Witten Group has been a long time coming. Um, we had it on the agenda, um, at a late June meeting, uh, but just, I've had a bunch of things in, um, in the pipeline. Uh, but, um, I, I, as you know, the, the town at the last special town meeting approved, um, forty thousand dollars for the Trails feasibility study, which was ac- actually subsequently backed up by a, by a grant, uh, like received, um, uh, by the, uh, the, uh, the, and, uh, I'm going to butcher the name, so I'm not even going to try.
Chairman, we saw a seat.
Yes, um, and I apologize, but, uh, that group led by, by Serpents, Bill Napolitano, uh, was very gracious enough to award the town and the Trails, the Trails Committee a forty thousand dollar grant. Um, so we didn't, and we don't have to expend the forty thousand dollars approved, uh, in the, uh, special town meeting warrant. Um, uh, uh, so we put the, working with the Trails Committee, we put the project out to bid. Um, uh, like we received responses to the bid, um, right around Memorial Day at this point. Um, and we did receive one, uh, one response, uh, from the Horace Lee Witten Group in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Uh, the contract is in line. Um, one of the advantages, uh, with the Horace Lee Witten Group is they're already working, uh, with the state D C R on, on, on the state portion of the sweet, of the Sweet Snow, um, Trail feasibility study. Uh, so really, at this, uh, like at this point, they'll be working on the whole Sweet Snow Trail in Dyton and, uh, Trail. Uh, they'll be working on our two ends, uh, you know, up, uh, like up, uh, by Sandpaper, um, and then down by Broad Cove, and then in the middle, um, uh, they're working on the feasibility uh, for, uh, the Department of Conservation and Recreation as well. So there's a lot of coordination here, uh, and in our work with them, uh, you know, over the last, over the last few months, we, uh, like I'm very confident in their work, their ability, uh, like in what we're going to be able to do to leverage, uh, you know, that entire asset for the community. So I do recommend approval, and, uh, if you could authorize me, as a town administrator, to, um, uh, to enter into that contract on the board's behalf, uh, that would be my recommendation.
Are there any questions?
Well, if I could just add to that, so I've met with, uh, this group, uh, probably three times. I'm one of the stakeholders in this, as well as the ADA Coalition, Kevin Smith with the Parks and Recreation, obviously Jeff with Trails, uh, Committee. And they've already done some good, they've got some good ideas. They will have a public hearing, I want to say it's sometime in September, the public can get involved and give any suggestions. The board of selectmen will have some say in this because one of the things they're talking about is, uh, because the Trails going to put behind this scrap, uh, here over there, the track, over there, and there's a possibility that that might be one of the entrances to the, uh, Trails. And we will have to discuss parking, uh, for the public, as well as handicap parking, stuff like that. They've really done some, they have some excellent suggestions. We have a final say in a lot of this. We want the input, obviously, from the Trails Committee. Uh, but we're going to have, uh, you know, parking at the beginning of the Trails, it looks like the Sandpiper Way is a cul-de-sac that they're really, it is feasible to put parking there. I would suggest that we do that. I'm not even sure if parking's allowed on cul-de-sac. I know that, uh, you know, Peter, that, well, we've done different, uh, forty B's and stuff like that. We have it allowed parking there on cul-de-sac, so that that might be a problem there. So the M may be a problem, but they, uh, they're, they're involved with Sweet Knolls, uh, D C R is obviously involved with that, and it's going to go right through, uh, Sweet Knolls. If anybody's familiar with railroad tracks, so. rail tracks. So it's a great opportunity for the town. I'm impressed with their experience. They've done a lot of these type of things, so I would support hiring them to do the feasibility study and design of this, and that Mike Mullin be the person who signs off on this.
Mr. Carron?
I don't think I can say it that intended.
Thank you. Mr. Carron, Mr. Jacob, could you put that?
Sure. I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve a Trails feasibility study contract with Horace Lee Whitten Group of Sandwich, Mass., and that we allow Town Administrator Mike Mullin be the signature person for this contract.
Mr. Carron, motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Jacob?
Aye.
Mr. Carron?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, selectmen's report. Mr. Pacheco, do you have anything?
I have no reports other than I met with this group yesterday, so I have no report.
Mr. Carron, do you have anything?
No, we haven't met over the Dayton Industrial Committee, which I think you're going to give it to them.
Yes, yes. I have also an explanation. I was requested, received a phone call from the chairman of the Water District today, and asked me to explain the reasons behind the emergency water ban that goes into effect July 26. And as Mr. Pacheco read earlier on, first violation is a written warning, second, $100, third violation, $200, fourth is $300, and a water service termination. The reason for this ban was a result partly of the drought, but also Cedar Street Well One is having some renovations and replacement of a pump. So that well is not producing at this time. The recent drought has brought a very high magnesium level to the Horton Street wells. That level is not a danger to the public, but before it became a danger to the public, they have taken it offline. Once the water levels improve, once the manganese level improves, those two will go back on time. Just to make residents fully aware, that the Water District approved at their town meeting the purchase of the Brook Street well from the town of Somerset, and that is pending Somerset Town approval in the fall. Once that approval has been reached, and that well is producing for the town, they estimate within a year's time, we should be okay. In their words, we will be okay. And then probably you will see a building moratorium as well. So the emergency water ban in effect now is needed, not just because there are water shortages, but there is a potential public safety concern if that Horton Street well was able to run under reduced capacity and with the manganese count high as it is. Regarding the Dayton Industrial Development Commission, that has become a very exciting group to work with. One of the needs of the town of Dayton is to control our tax rate. And cutting taxes means cutting services. And I think it's safe to say, service-wise in this community, we're not exorbitant in the services that we provide. We are pretty frugal. But what has raised the tax rate is that we have many capital projects that need to be taken care of and high maintenance needs because of the age of the town and the facilities in this town. Currently, the Dayton Industrial Development Commission is, one, looking to help a business maintain its operation in the town of Dayton. And I can't go into specifics, because contract negotiations are going on involving the manufacturer as well as potential seller. I will say that it is very optimistic that we can work out an agreement so that that business can maintain paying taxes in the town of Dayton. The second issue that we discussed in an open meeting, this town also is very, very limited on industrial and commercial sites for development in the town. We currently have two residents that live on the Winthrop Street area, who have adjacent properties of 75 acres. And at the meeting, we talked about the potential for its development. And they agreed at the Dayton Industrial Development Commission that it probably would not be wise to request a zoning change from commercial to industrial. So with that being said, the focus became on commercial development. And at that meeting, the following discussions will go forward with other individuals. This will take a monumental effort. Mr. Figurito is a member of the planning board, and he will be working closely with those two developers and landowners in trying to dot the i's and cross the t's to meet the requirements of the planning board. The city of Taunton has already expressed interest in working with us to extend sewer into Dayton along Winthrop Street. And with that in mind, today, I spoke with one of the members of the sewer commission in regards to it, and once he returns from Maine, he would be glad to sit down with the members of the Dayton Industrial Development Commission, and also with the developers in a plan of action. Mr. Mullin and I attended a meeting with City of Taunton officials earlier in the year, when we talked about a partnership. Taunton has a lot of water and sewer services available, and their facilities are running at about 67%. And they are looking for partners. They just created a wonderful partnership with MCI Bridgewater. So they're willing to expand to other communities, not necessarily their neighbors. The other situation is one that former selectman Dr. Brett Zagoffis opened the door and developed a good relationship with Congressman Jake Archencloche. And Town Administrator Mullin and I plan to pursue that. I attended an online meeting with Congressman Archencloche earlier in the year, and we did make contact with an administrative assistant, who, if we ever got serious about a plan for a sewer, he would be willing to assist us in funding or lobbying with Congress and the President for funding. At the time when we had the early discussions, the number we threw out was $22 million, and he was okay with that. We're not looking for $22 million for Winthrop Street. If we do, and if it's approved by the voters and all the obstacles that need to be overcome, it would be approximately 7.5 million, maybe 10, you know, figuring inflation. The cost of materials is going up incredibly well. So that's where they're at. We will keep you posted as things progress. We really need some industry in this town, or more business for sure. One Connection had Montel Williams last weekend come, and they had a very large turnout. That one went very well, and when talking One Connection, when they opened their doors, presented us a check for $25,000, which was very important and will be very important for the town of Dayton. Was there any questions? That's all I have on those two.
I just want to make a comment. You kept on, you said that the tax rate keeps on going up and up. The last six years, it's gone down a dollar on a thousand. What's gone up is the evaluations of people's homes. So nobody likes taxes, and I get that, but the tax rate has not gone up, it's gone down the last six years. So just want the public to understand that tax rate is different from what your taxes are. Tax rate is so much per thousand. We get to vote on that in December with the evaluations. I think last year, people's houses went up 10%, so the taxes have gone up.
I totally understand that, but what people really get upset about is their bills. And for many, many people in this town, those bills are a problem. And we had, when those bills went out, overwhelming calls, the tax assessor's office. So I think we have a major responsibility as members of the Board of Selectmen to law those tax bills, whether it be negotiating the splits, which we vote on the rates, or reaching out and trying to negotiate with bringing business into the community. And in September, we'll be talking more about the Dayton Industrial Development Commission in partnership with the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce is putting on a business expo, which will be in potential business owners, realtors, as well as developers and business people from the town, and trying to bring in more business to the town with the goal to produce more revenue for the town. And I think that's something that the Board of Selectmen in particular really need to strive to accomplish. Thank you. We have reviewed, discussed, and act under new business candidate for appointment to Town Accountant. Mr. Mullin?
Yes, and thank you, Chairman. As the board knows, and as our residents know, in mid-June, our former Town Accountant, Janelle Vining, provided her resignation that was effective actually last week, and we were very sad to see her go. But right after we received Ms. Vining's resignation from June 23rd to July 18th, we had the Town Accountant, the position of Town Accountant posted. We screened seven cover letters, resumes, and applications that had been received by the town during that time, and we subsequently convened an interview panel that consisted of myself, Chairman Hall, Executive Assistant Human Resources Coordinator Karen Brady, and Treasurer Collected Paul Reynolds, to hold interviews with three out of the seven applicants for the position. Our interview panel conducted interviews last Thursday afternoon and Friday morning. And as a result of the meetings with the candidates, on diligent review of their experience and qualifications, I am very, very, very excited and pleased to share the panel's unanimous recommendation of Serena Amorall for appointment to become Dayton's next Town Accountant. Ms. Amorall is here with us this evening. For the last four years, Ms. Amorall has served as the Assistant Town Accountant for the town of Rockland, and for the two years prior to that, served as a senior clerk in the Town's Accountant Department. There have been multiple occasions since 2018 where there have been vacancies in the position of Town Accountant, where Ms. Amorall had confidently and diligently led the department forward while building productive relationships with department heads, think团 members, and various board, and various board and committee members. As outlined in the cover letter and resume in her packet, Ms. Amorall has a significant technical understanding of municipal accounting, budgeting, and municipal finance law, and also comes highly recommended. During her interview on Friday morning, she conveyed a strong grasp of the issues and challenges outlined in Dayton's recent financial management review, and also the longstanding items that have been brought to light in recent management letters. She demonstrated a strong desire to continue working towards earning her certified government accountant designation. She already holds an associate, a Massachusetts certified public purchasing official designation in existing memberships in the Mass Municipal Auditors and Accountants Association, and also the Plymouth Norfolk Bristol Auditors and Accountants Association. As you know, up until last year, I served as a member, I served as a member of the Rockland Board of, the Rockland Board of Selectmen. And while I had a very limited working relationship with Serena, I can speak very confidently and favorably to her due diligence, her expertise and reputation. I believe personally and professionally that we would be very, very, very well suited to have Serena bring her qualifications and experience to our team, especially at this really important time we're facing as a town. So again, I wanted to introduce, I wanted to introduce Serena to the board, you know, I'll have the opportunity to say hello, and answer any questions that the board might have.
Mike, come up to podium, please. So Ms. Amorall, you have a very impressive resume.
Thank you.
Impressive with that. The only question that I have is, I know you're the Assistant Town Accountant. How much experience do you have in free cash certification?
Free cash, so I did help our past accountant see if, you know, what we had for defaults and what was going to negatively impact us, and tried to collect that money before the end of September in hopes that it wouldn't go against our free cash. And I do have a basic understanding of how we come to that number. After we close the books, you know, we have our undesigned fund balance, which is basically whatever's left over, and then you take into account accounts receivables and deferred revenue, and then you subtract all those and you have deficit accounts, and then the remainder is considered your free cash balance.
Thank you. That was my, you were going to say something?
Nope. Thanks.
That wasn't the only question.
Thank you. Mr. Carron?
I don't have any questions. If Mike has interviewed you and he considers you a great candidate, then I'm not going to question him.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carron, Ms. Brady and I were also involved in the interview process. I don't know if Ms. Brady has anything that she would like to...
I just thought, well, compared to the interview, she obviously did a lot of research. She knew a lot about our town. She answered all of our questions completely and thoroughly. She definitely has the experience and qualifications to hit the ground running, and we unanimously agree with that she would be a good candidate. We're excited to have her mentor.
Yes, thank you. Two things that are important to me. One, team. Mr. Mullin has a good financial advisory team, all rentals. Mr. Mullin has a good financial advisory team, Paul Reynolds, and with Stephanie Shadver from the assessor's office, and...
Aye, Karen.
Karen. And the fact that you've worked with Mr. Mullin in the past means that that team just continued to run very smoothly, and it has been very effective in advising FinCon and the Board of Selectmen. You also have some procurement experience.
I do.
And that's very important. Take a little bit of load off of Mr. Mullin, who's playing his overfield.
So yeah, it is like a shared responsibility. I mean, I, oh, you know, I will be the chief procurement officer, but in like reviewing expense warrants and invoices, like, oh, you know, there's a healthy process there. We're both, the town accountant and the town administrator need to be a part of it, so.
Together, we all achieve more. That's what team's about. The other piece, just so you know, as we go forward, and this was discussed and agreed upon, it was a question that was asked in the interview process. Ms. Amorall has agreed, knowing fully well that we do have a good educational incentive program, to commit to X amount of years to be negotiated in contract, final contract negotiations of service to the community in lieu of any degree or educational advancement that she attains while employed through us and paid for by us. And I thought that was very important. You know, the accounting field right now is incredibly competitive and expensive. And I've heard, and I've reached out to some neighboring communities, of what other communities are paying. And to keep a good running team, you have to be in the game, just like Major League Baseball. You have to be competitive with your neighbors, or you lose people to your neighbors. And I think one of the areas that's a strength for us is our educational incentive program. On the same token, we don't want people coming in for two, three years, getting an advanced degree and leaving us without some commitment or payback to us. With that being said, unless there are any further comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to accept or appoint Serena, C. Serena, C. Amorall, as the next town accountant, subject to pending contract negotiations.
Motion move.
Motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hall is in. Congratulations. Next on the agenda, review and discuss an act upon the engagement letter between John P. Kuzminsky, MBA, CGA, doing business as Tower and Randolph.
So yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things with the transition we do have in the accounting department, we don't want to lose any of the, you know, the progress, or when Ms. Serena does begin, we don't want to have her really dig out of a hole before she's able, you know, to hit the ground running. So one of the things we mentioned, and Mr. Pacico had mentioned the free cash certification process earlier, we have an agreement with the prior town accountant, with the prior town accountant, Ms. Vining, who has agreed, because that's who she is, she's incredible. She has agreed to come back, to come back three hours a week, usually either late Tuesday afternoon or early Wednesday morning, to review our expense and payroll warrants before they're submitted each week. So we have a check, so we have a check on that with someone, you know, who understands the things and really knows what to look for there. So we have that, we have that until Ms. Amorall begins. One of the things that we don't have, however, you know, if we do have a gap in having someone who will bring us, who will bring us to our free cash certification process, and someone to work with us and work in the accounting department to help us really close the books for the town in FY '22. Understanding that we don't expect Serena to begin her work for the town towards the end of August, we have reached out to a gentleman by the name of John Kuzminsky. He actually comes highly recommended from the firm, who did some consulting with us last year, Eric Kinchif. And he had recommended John, who just retired from the town of Palmer last year, and who also did an interim stint in the town of Uxbridge during the vacancies of both their town accountant and their town treasurer. I did reach out, did reach out to the Uxbridge town manager last week, and I did do a reference, did do a reference check for Mr. Kuzminsky. But basically, we would retain Mr. Kuzminsky on an as-needed basis, just to help us bring us to a point where like early to mid-September, we could actually submit our free cash first certification with the DOR. So that wouldn't, so that wouldn't put us behind the DOR. And it would also allow us to continue on the same schedule that we have historically had, to bring us to a very early November special town meeting. So again, it would be on an as-needed basis. Once we do, you know, once we are in a good place to close out the FY '22 budget, and submit FY '22 books to be certified for free cash, we would stop the engagement. But his rate, his rate at the rate of $90 an hour definitely fits within our budget. We expect him to work no more than 15 hours a week. You know, so like, you know, it would basically be at most budget neutral. So I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
I have no questions.
Mr. Karen?
I don't have any at this time.
I would like to read into the record the engagement letter regarding Mr. Kuzminsky. This engagement letter dated July 19, 2022 confirms the part-time consulting services requested by the town of Dyton, the client, to be provided by John Kuzminsky, MBA, CGA, doing business as Tower and Randolph, said consultant. These part-time services may be provided either on-site or remotely for up to 15 hours per week. It may include, we're not necessarily limited to, the following projects: accounting assistance, annual report preparation, and financial staff, treasurer, collector, assessor, support and training. The hourly fee for providing these services will be billed monthly at $90 per hour plus reimbursement of mileage expenses at the current IRS standard business mileage rate. In addition, the client agrees to provide and set up consultant with computer access and pay for any costs incurred for general leisure, example, VADA-related expenses. These services may be terminated at any time upon written notice by either party. I would also like to add that the going rate for this type of work is $125 an hour. So the $90 is frugal. With that being said, if there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the engagement letter between John Kuzminsky, doing business as Tower and Randolph and the town of Dyton.
I guess I do have one more question. What's the end date?
The end date is undefined right now because we don't have a specific date when we would have that free cash certification submitted. But at the very latest, I mean, I am planning on mid-September.
Mid-September, okay.
Like at the very latest, you know, so there would be some overlap with Serena, but also give her time to come in and get settled without, you know, having to dive in. She's already going to be diving in anyways, but diving in to like the fiscal year operating budget being FY '22, that, you know, we want her to be able to hit the ground running with '23, and then actually beginning to plan for '24 at that point.
Just to follow up on that. Money has been set aside and budgeted for this consultant, is that correct?
Yes, so one of the things we have, we have breakage because we have the position of the town accountant vacant for the, really about a month and a half, in the two days out of 15 hours a week. When you break that down and divide it by two, that rate is actually less than the hourly rate for the town accountant as well. So we do have some savings there, but to specifically, to specifically answer your question, I should have brought this up, we will be paying, we need to pay this consultant out of the professional and technical expense line in the accounting budget, and the breakage that I just mentioned is in the personnel line. So this will, even though it's all within the accounting department budget, by the end of the year, we will probably have to move, move the available amount from the personnel budget down to the expense budget in the professional and technical line because we have to offset those costs.
But just follow up on that.
Yes.
Under no condition will we go into red to make this work?
No.
Unlike other department issues that we've had in the past. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's my expectation, I mean, with the breakage and with the available funding that is made available right now, if I'm not having the, I'm a town accountant, that we have, we have, we have, and even if, and even if we didn't have, it's our responsibility to come, it's my responsibility to come to the board with a plan. You know, even if we did, I'll have to go into a deficit, which I don't believe now we do, but it's my responsibility to come with a plan. You know, but the plan involves right now not going into that deficit.
I would strongly urge you not go into the deficit.
No, I don't disagree.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, at the time we did the budget for the town accountant, we didn't know that the town accountant was leaving, so we didn't budget for this because it was only after the voters approved the budget for the town accountant that we found that the town accountant was going to leave, so we couldn't budget for that.
Yeah, but we do have them there, so.
What a good budget manager makes it work.
Yeah, yes, yes, to an extent, when we had the vacancy last year, we didn't have a choice but to need to go to the reserve fund. You know, but we identified and were transparent with that need very early on because we didn't want to dig ourselves in a hole in the time that we did not have a town accountant.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen appoint John Kuzminsky as that town accountant consultant as needed.
Motion made second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacico?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is in. Review, discuss, and act update regarding Dyton-Rochford School Committee, school security And I'm going to ask that we, could we limit our discussion to just the security issue and not the second piece on the agenda? Well, at the school committee meeting, they talked about security, but they also talked about de-regilization.
Oh, yeah, no, this is really just an update. We do have an incoming Chief Crone here to discuss the, only the first part of that meeting as well.
Thank you very much.
So I'm just going to give a review. Is when, or when, do you think?
I feel comfortable introducing you, if that's okay.
Yes, yes, please. That's what I was waiting for. Thank you for taking the call on that.
Talk about something that developed as a grassroots idea. When Bill Rooney came on board, he had some security concerns. And those security concerns were someone coming from a city school out of rural and coming to Dyton in Rochefort, and he saw something that a lot of people in a small town don't always see. Because the number of people that we have in this community, they could be a real threat because of various socioeconomic conditions, is less. But as we've found out in history, small towns have to be on alert just as much as big towns. And he saw the need to upgrade security, and he's had many discussions with the police and with town officials, members of them, and last night was for public input. Some of the things that they are planning have to be discussed in executive session. I know the neighboring community of Taunton has one of the better security systems in the state, and Mr. Rooney has ties to Taunton. And those issues, I don't know if Lieutenant Cronin wants to get into this this evening. The one thing that did come out of the meeting was the potential for an additional SRO for the elementary and middle school. And that piece absolutely began as a grassroots effort by many people. I attended a block potty where residents in Dyton expressed concern, especially after the shooting in Texas, for the need to improve security. As one mother said, after Uvalde, I didn't take my child's safety for granted, nor did I take for granted that she would get off the bus in the same condition, mentally or physically, as she was when she went on the bus that morning. And as I said at the firecracker festival, I had discussions with the PTO at a leadership table, and they were on board with it. And I had said to them, I said, "Look, this is what one particular group had requested." I, and it's no secret that, you know, I'm a member of the Republican Town Committee, and they actually had a discussion about it in a vote, and they wanted to see, and they have a group between 35 members, that they wanted to see an SRO added for the elementary and middle school. So it came down, and I spoke to the superintendent, and Bill was totally on board, actually overwhelmed by the town's outreach and willingness to put it forward. So we spoke to Town Administrator Mullin and Lieutenant Cronin and... So we spoke to Town Administrator Mullin and Lieutenant Cronin, and it's definitely financially doable, and my understanding, and I'm not gonna speak for the police officers, but they're on board with it too. So, um, that's kinda where we're at. I know the Dayton delegation on the school committee is in favor of it. I'm sure the financial piece is still going to be discussed, but, um, I am hoping my colleagues will be totally in support of going forward, um, and I'll let Mr. Mullin and Mr. Cronin want to explain the security end and the financial end, so we have a clearer picture of how this is doable. Lieutenant Cronin?
Yeah, so, Mr. Pacheco, I didn't realize you were there last night.
I didn't wanna sit in the reserved area, wanting to be independent.
But, um, I think we can all agree, it was pretty encouraging that they share the priority of safety, and, um, it's been refreshing talking to Mr. Rooney over the last few weeks. So, you know, like you said, we kinda, we understood that there was a need, no question. We've understood there's been a need for a while, but operationally, you can only do so much with what you have, and we're very fortunate, we're at a place right now with staffing, assignments, roles, I think we can make it happen, and, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and say it's overdue because it's just the way things have happened, it's, it's, we manage the best that we can, but we're in a position right now that we can, I think we can do this. Uh, like you said, the union is supportive of it, which is incredible, we have officers in the department right now that are completely bought in to the SRO program, and that can be a challenge in policing, that can be a struggle in policing because you have to have the right people that wanna do that, and we're fortunate right now that we have, we have a handful of, of people to choose from that, that wanna do it. So we're in a very unique and lucky spot to go forward with this, and, you know, you alluded to the finance of it, yeah, there's, there's some things to be hashed out, but, um, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's a green light, as long as everything's all set, it's a green light to go ahead with, um, additional talks to get this in place for the school year.
Uh, Mr. Mullin?
Yes, so, um, so to that end, uh, we do and we will have a process in front of us. Um, uh, um, one of the things that makes, uh, this, uh, this process, um, that if the board is agreeable to, oh, you know, like, we, oh, oh, uh, really continuing to work forward, uh, one of the things that make, uh, this process, oh, you, oh, you know, shall I say timely, uh, 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 'cause, uh, 'cause the fact that last week, uh, the town and the department, um, and SRO Hathaway took possession of Oki, and, uh, because we have an MOU, uh, like with, uh, with the school district to provide, to provide an SRO and to have an SRO, uh, at the high school, um, but, uh, you know, however we do this, um, uh, you know, like in, uh, like in wherever, uh, you know, uh, Officer Hathaway works, we need to have an agreement, and an amended update agreement with the school district to recognize that included, including with the SRO, oh, you know, is a comfort dog as well, and, um, and how we, uh, you know, and how we want, uh, you know, the, uh, the comfort dog, uh, in the department to really have the flexibility, uh, to serve the Dayton and the community, oh, you know, to have that comfort dog serve that day in the community. So, uh, based on that, we have the need to, uh, to update our, uh, the SRO, MOU anyways, and, uh, you know, like it could, um, and it could give rise, uh, based on the conversation we're having this evening, uh, to have, uh, to really have a separate MOU, uh, with, uh, with the school district, uh, so we could potentially, um, have one, have one MOU specifically for the high school, um, and then one MOU like for, uh, the pre-k to eight campus, um, down the road, and, um, how, uh, like, uh, you know, like, really, the mechanics of how that, how the, the pre-k to eight SRO would work on the Dayton end i- is actually a lot, uh, like, it's a, it's a, it's a lot simpler, if you will, uh, than the mechanics of the MOU at the high school, uh, based, based on the shared costs, uh, that both, uh, that bo, that both communities have, um, at the high school, whereas, uh, whereas on the Dayton campus, oh, you know, if we basically pay dollar for dollar what our expenses are, um, uh, and we already have, uh, and we already have offices in place, uh, we already have offices trained, oh, you know, I mean, and there is the potential, oh, you know, with how, how we structure, um, how we structure the program, uh, uh, on the SRO program to really maximize, uh, the flexibility, uh, uh, that the department and the town will have with a comfort dog as well. Um, and also too, uh, historically, we have, oh, you know, historically, when we thought of an SRO, uh, we have only really thought of it as being a very, a very high school, very high school-centered, um, but, oh, you know, to have, have the potential to not only bring it to the Dayton campus, the DMS and DES, but to, uh, even have more of an interaction with Bristol Aggie as well, uh, oh, you know, we do think the opportunity's really there for that, uh, you know, and that, and as Lieutenant Cronin mentioned, oh, you know, like it may be a long overdue, oh, you know, a long overdue opportunity.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
It is, it, it seems like a lot, but it's exciting to be in this position, I, I think we're fortunate, there's not a lot of smaller towns like us that are in this position to be able to take advantage of it, so, it's exciting.
And we, we have cross, across young, the old, Democrats, Republicans, everyone in town seems to be on board with this.
Yes, agree.
So, um, so, um, 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 so one of the things, just really, so everyone, uh, has the same expectation on this, over the next month, uh, because, uh, the board won't meet next, um, uh, until August twenty-fourth, uh, like we do, uh, 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 you know, have a hope and a plan to come up with updated MOUs, uh, like with the school district, uh, to be able to present for further consideration, uh, to the board at the meeting on the twenty-fourth. Uh, the school committee is also meeting that week as well, uh, so like we might, oh, you know, like if, uh, if we do this right, and we don't wanna rush it, um, but, uh, with the incoming, uh, uh, with the start of the new school year as well, oh, you know, it's, oh, you know, it is the hope and possible expectation, uh, that if we do this right, uh, uh, you know, and have agreement on all sides, that we may be able to have this in place for the new year as well.
The new school year.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We're hoping it's seamless, that's, that's the goal.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just only comment that, I, I'm supporting this, my only comment is, as you know, it was mentioned last night, that when SRO was on vacation or whatever, will we have coverage?
Sure, it's, so that, that came up, and here's the, here's the real, the, the real answer, there are certain certifications they need to obtain and renew, those trainings aren't offered very often, so there are going to be times when they may both be in those trainings. The second side of that is annual inserts, that's easy, we can schedule that and offset schedules so that we can have some overlapping coverage. Um, we have, right now, we have three certified school resource officers in the department, so I'm confident that, I'm not gonna say a hundred percent of the time, but I'm confident that we'll be able to make up that gap, um, a lot easier than we have in the past. And Mr. Rooney was very, uh, transparent, and he understands that things do come up, and it may be a phone call, you know, if something does occur, he calls us and we go. So there's a good understanding that, um, we're in a good spot, we're really out with this whole thing.
And one of the other things from the educational side, a good principal knows his students, knows what activities de-escalate.
Sure.
And which, uh, excite, and if, a good principal working with Lieutenant, Police Chief, works together, they can plan activities on those days that...
Yeah.
...the officer isn't gonna be there, you know. One of the things that I learned in education, quiet days are usually testing days, everybody is in a classroom taking their test.
Yes.
High school, you can have early dismissal, depending on the activities you schedule, to help control situations, the few that you mentioned may occur.
Sure.
Where officers aren't in the building. And one of the things that has become very apparent is Mr. Rooney's willingness to work with the community, not just with Mr. Mullin, but with the entire community to make this work.
Agreed, yeah.
So I'm excited about it.
Yeah, I think about it, there's a lot of new beginnings on a lot of fronts here, so everybody's gonna start the same line and move forward together, so.
Mr. Karen, any questions?
No, I would say the, the process at the, uh, my office, and, um, so I have all those questions answered.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion to authorize, um, Lieutenant Cronin and Town Administrator Mullin to continue negotiations toward the completion of a memoranding, memorandum of understanding with the Dayton, um, School Committee and the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional, um, School Administration for, uh, a SRO.
I so move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on a letter to Bristol County Agricultural High School regarding the Center Street paving concerns that the Town of Dayton has. Uh, Mr. Mullin, would you like me to read this rec, uh, letter into the record, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory?
Yes.
Um, both Mr. Aggiear and, um, Mr. Ferry have been working on this matter, um, it's also my understanding that former selectman Nancy Gulat has also been involved, and brought it to our attention, that there are concerns about, um, Center Street in regards to unfinished work as a result of the Bristol Aggie project. We'd like today to follow up on a recent, on recent meetings and discussions between various Town of Dayton and Bristol County Agricultural High School officials and representatives from Gilbane Building Company, Jay Avanagro, and Colly's project leaders, where Dayton officials have requested the repaving of various areas of Center Street. As you know, town officials waived five-year road cut moratorium requirements to accommodate the Aggie's expansive school building construction project. However, as a result of the project's infrastructure requirements, within the roadway affected portions of Center Street are now in extremely poor condition. We respectfully seek your assistance to address this issue, which includes the need to resurface the eastbound lane of Center Street for the road crown to be symmetrical, in addition to addressing a multitude of curb-to-curb trench crossings. We specifically request that the eastbound lane of Center Street from Somerset Avenue to the first driveway into the south campus entrance to Gilbert Hall be repaved and returned to as near original condition prior to the installation of the water line. In addition, we request that the eleven north-south trench crossings on Center Street East towards the river be raised to the level of Center Street prior to the road cuts. The work described above requires one and one-half inches deep milling and inlay paving in all areas of work. Again, the town waived the five-year moratorium that prohibited road cuts to accommodate construction of the new campus, with the understanding that Center Street would be returned to as near its original condition prior to construction. During a meeting held last week between school, construction, and town leaders, Aggie officials, Gilbane and Jay Avanagro, all agreed that improving the condition of Center Street would be a priority and a shared responsibility between the Aggie, Gilbane, and Jay Avanagro. The Board of Selectmen looks forward to working with our applicable town departments and Aggie partners to make this priority a rea- reality. Thank you for your time, attention, to the supporting issue. Should that say, "Thank you for your timely attention to the supporting issue"?
Uh, either that or time and attention, so there's a title there.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize.
Uh, are there any questions?
I don't have any.
Mr. Karen? I'll entertain a motion to accept passage of this letter and for it to be as amended and to be sent to John Mitchell Esquiat, Chairman Building Committee, Bristol County Agricultural High School.
I so move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye, motion passes. Next on the agenda is to appoint Robert Perry to the Solid Waste Committee. The Board of Health met on July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and voted to recommend Robert Perry for one of the resident lodge members of the Solid Waste Committee. Unless there are any questions, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Perry to the Solid Waste Committee.
I'll make a motion to the Board of Selecting appoint, uh, Chairman Robert Perry to the Solid Waste Committee.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye, the motion passes. Next on the agenda is to appoint Robert Woods as a planning board member to the Storm Water Committee. Uh, this letter is to the Board of Selectmen from Kerry Easterday, Office Manager for the Planning Board. Please be advised on Ju- July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, the Planning Board voted unanimously to appoint Vice Chairman Robert Woods as the Planning Board's Representative Liaison and Clerk Joseph Figurito as the Planning Board's Alternative Representative Liaison to the Storm Water Committee. Although they are list, listed separately, I would entertain a motion to appoint Robert Woods as the Planning Board's Representative Liaison and Joseph Figurito as the Planning Board's Alternative Representative Liaison to Storm Water Committee.
I so move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Uh, review, discuss, and act on a request to appoint Charles Mello as the Conservation Commission Member to the Storm Water Committee. On Thursday, July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, Charles Mello was voted to represent the Commission at the Storm Water Committee meeting, signed Chairman James Digit. Uh, I will entertain a motion to appoint Charles Mello as the Conservation Commission Member to the Storm Water Committee.
I so move.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye, motion passes. Review and discuss an act, the appointment of Elizabeth Marrera as a Community Preservation Committee Clerk. Um, I would like to have Mr. Mullin summarize, um, the process in hiring or asking us to appoint...
Yes.
...Miss Marrera to the CPC.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, um, um, as you, um, as you know, Miss Marrera, um, is a film, is a fairly new employee to Dayton's town government, um, and was recently interviewed, um, uh, for her, uh, for her new position, uh, working, um, um, as a sewer clerk in the sewer department, and, um, um, based on the appro- And based on the approved job description for the CPC clerk at the Board, had approved at the last meeting, the job description envisioned the hopeful the hopeful opportunity to offer additional hours to the members of the Clerical Union who didn't who weren't already up to the existing 35 hours a week. And so we sent the email and we sent the email posting, we posted the job opportunity to all members of the Clerical Union right after the last meeting. And we've only received one applicant, and that being Ms. Marrera. And knowing her, already knowing her skills, her qualifications, and already what she's done already for the Sewer Department, you know, I am quite confident in her abilities to become the CPC clerk. And I think she'd make a great addition to the CPC team. She can provide a lot of needed structure and support to the CPC team as well. So that's what brings us here.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I don't have any.
I will entertain a motion to appoint Elizabeth Marrera as the clerk for the CPC.
I saw move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next on the agenda is the appointment of Andrew LaPointe as a Communications Dispatcher. On June 22, 2022, the Board of Selectmen did their annual appointments. At that time, I, Ms. Curran, from the Board of Selectmen's office, let Andrew LaPointe, part-time communications dispatcher off the list. I am now requesting that he be appointed through June 30, 2024 as a communications dispatcher. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion to appoint Andrew LaPointe as a communications dispatcher, part-time basis.
Through June 30, 2024. I saw move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Next is review, discuss, and act on the designation of a special municipal employee to the Cable Committee. Mr. Mullen, are we going to talk about the specific individual or just the position?
So...
Because I don't see any communication of the individual's name.
Yes, so how the special municipal employee designation works is it's actually it's not about the individual, it is about the position. And when you, and when the Board votes to and when the, and when the Board votes to make, to have a position covered as a special municipal employee, it does imply, it does apply to all the individuals who have that title. In this instance, it is being proposed because a member of the Cable Committee has been hired for a full-time position with the Council on Aging. She has, she's gone through, can file the appropriate disclosures with the town clerk. And in order, but in order in order for her to begin her full-time employment with the town, we do need clarification that her very part-time position with the town is a is a special municipal employee designated position. And so that's what we're seeking and asking the Board to consider tonight. You will see in the packet that in order for the designation to be made, the position meaning the Cable Commission must be must fall within one of the following three categories. The position is unpaid, the employee holds or an employee holds a part-time position which allows you to work at another job during normal working hours. Or number three, the employee was not paid by the city or town for more than 800 working hours, approximately 20 weeks full-time during the preceding 365 days. It is, I'm very safe to say, and we did the math and we pulled the payroll records to check, but this is but this is definitely not the case. The employee the underlying employee here, just as an example, worked 200 hours last week. I mean, I'm sorry, last year, not last week, last year. So, well behind, well below the 800-hour threshold there. So, again, everything we do as a town, we do transparently. We go through the proper disclosures, and that's why we're bringing it forward to the Board tonight.
Are there any questions?
I have no question.
With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Cable Commission position as a special municipal employee.
I saw move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. The motion passes. Next, the request, facilities request. Father's House Family Church. In our packet is included the application for free backpack distribution at the gazebo on August 13, 2022, from noon to 3:00 p.m. Mr. Pillings, Board of Health, has said if they're selling food, they will need a temporary food permit. They are saying they do not need any sanitation services. Are there any questions?
I have no questions.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the facilities request of Father's House Family Church to use the gazebo on August 13, 2022, from noon to 3:00 p.m.
I saw move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. It is approved. Review and discuss an act. S E R S G Award of the Paper Contract.
Yes.
Mr. Mullen, could you speak on this? Is the recommendation to award the contract to W.B. Mason?
Yes, it absolutely is. One of the, one of the biggest values that the town has, and I want to really credit the prior town administrator with bringing to and bringing Dighton to Sersage. It's the fact that Sersage is a regional procurement group. So, a lot of the day-to-day supplies, a lot of, actually, all of, all of our DPW materials, all, a lot, a lot of our paper and office supplies as well has been procured by Sersage with us as a member. And we actually split our membership fee with the Dighton Water District as well. So, it's a, it's a very good value. You know, it does save me, as the chief procurement officer, a whole lot of work because we're able we're able to, we're able to utilize and go up to bid with Sersage for, you know, for a lot of the day-to-day supplies and materials that we use on a regular basis. So, in this instance, it's a paper contract that Sersage has essentially procured for us. They went up to bids. They, they, then they reviewed the bids based, you know, like a reputation and lowest price. And we do have a recommendation to between 7/1/22, in the end of the fiscal year, to award a contract to W.B. Mason for our paper items. So I do recommend this.
Are there any questions?
I have no question.
I want to take a motion for the Town of Dighton to award the contract for paper supplies to W.B. Mason Incorporated, Brockton, Massachusetts, for a one-year period commencing July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023.
I saw move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hall is an aye. Pro schedule for fall special town meeting.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have, and I do want to, I do want to thank Ms. Curran and Ms. Brady for their work in coordination with all applicable town departments, whether it be the town clerk, our town council, the moderator, as well to coordinate the date, the proposed meeting date for the special town meeting on November 1, 2022. I do want to call, call attention to the Tuesday date that is being proposed. It is different from our tradition of having it on a Monday. And the reason for that is the following Monday is the night before the state general election. So that is a very difficult night logistically for the town clerk's office.
It's also Halloween.
So, yeah, like, and the reason we didn't do the night before at the first would probably be that probably everyone from the village would probably not come out to the special town meeting as well. So, those, so those kind of things are sacred. So, which is why the November 1 date is being proposed. And then really backing up in terms of the timeline, so this, so this would envision the Board at its next meeting on August 24, opening the special town meeting warrant. It would be open for approximately three weeks. And it would be closed on September 14. The Board would have a draft warrant, review and place articles on September 28. And then, and then sign the warrant on October 12. I mentioned earlier the interaction with the free cash, with the free cash certification as well. This, oh, your disanticipated timeline, you know, does, you know, does actually does actually create the possibility that we might not actually have, you know, a certified free cash number by the time that the warrant is set. But as long as we have that, it can, as long as we have a submitted number, then we'll be able to plan on that, based on that. And as long that is, just like we did last year, as long as it is certified by that November 1 date, I will be in good stead. One of the, one of the reasons also for the, you know, like, a little condensed time period for the opening of the warrant is with our new capital outlay priorities. You know, we're not really, this is in my view, a real benefit at the capital planning. We're not opening the warrant and, it's like the field of dreams. I'm not having any idea what is going to come. We already, we already know what the, what the, what the capital priorities are that we largely need to fund because they, they've already been recommended. So, you know, that will take a lot of the guesswork, you know, like, and a lot of oh, yeah, a lot of the guesswork out of this process. And I think this, I think the process, the timeline will make, will really help to begin streamlining this process.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have no question.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion to accept the proposed meeting dates and schedule for the fall special town meeting as proposed for Tuesday, November 1, 2022.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the proposed meeting dates for the special town meeting on Tuesday, November 1, 2022, that we open the special town meeting warrant on August 24, 2022, close the special town meeting warrant on September 14, 2022, draft a warrant, review and place articles on September 28, 2022, sign the final warrant on October 12, 2022, and post the warrant on October 17, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye.
Just really quick, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one more thing on that, I should have mentioned it. But I just want to call everyone's attention to the fact that the special town meeting on November 1 will be held at the Dighton Middle School. The D.R. Auditorium will be undergoing repairs. On November 1, so the special town meeting, you know, I just want to call everyone's attention to it now. The November's first special town meeting will be held at the Dighton Middle School, and we've already ran it through, through DMS as well.
Do you have a time for that yet? The time starts?
7:00 p.m.?
Well, usually, yes, but we usually meet before with FinCom.
Yes.
Either 6:00 or 6:30. Acknowledgements. Correspondence. We have an email from John Lawrence. Dear Mrs. Gales, I have to unfortunately step down from the Historical Commission. My work is increasing and getting very busy. I enjoy my time working with all of you, and I hope to join again in the future. Sincerely, John Lawrence. Mr. Lawrence has stepped up in many, many ways on many committees. And he was recently appointed Chairman of the Solid Waste Committee. And as all of you are aware, that committee is going to be very busy. And his work just with that is going to be very time-consuming. So, Mr. Lawrence needed to give up something. And unfortunately, he's asking to resign from the Historical Commission. Are there any questions? I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation from the Historical Commission with sincere appreciation and thanks to Jonathan Lawrence.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Jonathan Lawrence from the Historical Commission with thanks and appreciation.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Karen? Chairman Hall is an aye. We have a letter from Pamela J. Nicholson resigning from the Historical Commission. Dear Mrs. Gales, please accept this email as my formal resignation from the Dighton Historical Commission. I enjoyed my time as clerk and learned so much of Dighton's rich past while helping to preserve landmarks and historic homes. Unfortunately, personal challenges and professional responsibilities have made it difficult for me to continue as a member of the DHC, and wish my colleagues and friends on DHC the very best, and hope to remain in contact with all of you. Are there any questions?
I just want to say that she was a big asset for the Dighton Historical Commission. She was very active. She was a cleric, and she participated in a lot of the things that was needed to be done.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Your turn.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Pam J. Nicholson with sincere thanks and appreciation.
I saw move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. We received an email from Kristin Curran regarding the resignation from the Dighton Cultural Council. Hi, Leanne. Please remove my email address from any correspondence. I will be moving out of state in a few weeks and will no longer be on the Board of the Dighton Cultural Council. Thanks, Kristin Curran. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Mr. Karen? That being said, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation from the Dyton Cultural Council of Kristin Curran with sincere thanks and appreciation.
I so move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Next on the agenda is a letter from Annabelle Powell and a request that we accept a donation. We are pleased to inform you that Primetime has received a donation in the amount of $30. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town account and deposited in the Primetime Gift and Donations Account. Should you have any questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate to call Annabelle Powell, Executive Director of Dyton Council on Aging. Are there any questions?
I don't have any.
I will entertain a motion to accept the Council on Aging, a donation to the Council... I'm sorry. I will entertain a motion to accept a donation in the amount of $30 to be turned over to the town account and deposited in the Primetime Gift and Donations Account.
I so move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you. Minutes. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of June 22, 2022. We've all had opportunity to review these. Are there any questions? I will entertain a motion to accept regular meeting minutes of June 22, 2022.
I so move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hull is an aye. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes of June 29, 2022. We've all had opportunity to review these. Are there any questions? With that being said, I will entertain a motion to accept. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye. Excuse me. I'll make the motion, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Make the motion that we approve the minutes of the special meeting minutes of June 29, 2022.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hull is an aye. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes of July 8, 2022. Are there any questions? We've had opportunity to review these.
We have not been given these minutes. So I didn't have an opportunity to review. The meeting was actually, I believe, on July 9.
It was. It was a typographical error on the agenda. So we will place it on the next one.
Thank you. And I noticed that the July 13 minutes are not included as well.
July 13.
No, we have those minutes. I review those minutes. It was in the packet.
Okay, just a minute. Thank you. Sorry. On approval of the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes of July 8, actually, it was July 9. No, it was July 8.
It was July 9, but we weren't given those minutes. So we...
Okay.
Nothing for us to review.
Thank you.
But I believe we're going to get it for the next...
I'll entertain a motion to table.
I'll make a motion that we table the approval of the special meeting minutes of July 9, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
All right. It's been a long night, Tepita.
Yes. I'm feeling myself. Chairman Hull is an aye. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of July 13, 2022. We've had an opportunity to review these. Are there any questions?
I have no questions.
With that, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the regular meeting minutes of July 13, 2022.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Approval of the warrants. Mr. Pacheco?
Make a motion that we approve the warrants for July 20, 2022. 3A-23, $107,625.66. 3B-23, $256,593. And 3C-23, $790,000.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the warrants for July 27, 2022. 4A-23, $114,418.12. 4B-23, $14,536.12. And 4C-23, $188,699.67.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Public input. No?
Dave, nothing?
With that being said, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
I'll make a motion that we go into, the Board of Selectmen go into the executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 1, excuse me, Section 21A.2, to conduct strategies session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. A contract negotiations, town accountant, and we will not be going back into open meeting.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you. Thank you very much.